Okay.
Welcome, everyone, to the City Council meeting Tuesday, May 5th, Feliz Cinco de Mayo, San Gabriel. I will call the meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Before we begin with the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to have our city attorney Keith Lemire make a special announcement.
Sure, Madam Mayor, this is an announcement coming out of the closed session, special closed session that was held about a half hour ago. And it's a, it's a report on that. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the item identified as, let's see if I got this pronunciation, Gultriman versus the city of San Gabriel. This city council, the council received, I'm sorry, is there somebody, am I not?
I need people to mute, please. There's some, okay, go ahead, Keith.
Sorry about that. City Council received a report from Special Counsel Spencer Wilson. No reportable action took place regarding this matter. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report on this matter.
Okay, thank you so much. We will be led, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Pooh.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Please rise and face a flag or place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation, and God. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Pooh. Clerk, please, please call the role.
Mayor Manchaca, here. Vice Mayor Liao.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Pooh.
Here.
Great, thank you. So tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on cable channel three in our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will now be read into the record. Comments will be read by Assistant City Clerk Marilyn Bonus for up to three minutes each. Agenda items will be introduced by Chief City Clerk Sharon Clark. Thank you. Okay, next item, approval of agenda. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations. Proclamation of the month of May is National Preservation Month. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Arminia Shapiro.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca and members of the City Council. Every year in May, local preservation groups, state historical societies, businesses, and civic organizations across the country celebrate Preservation Month. Typically, this month has entailed events that promote historic places and heritage tourism, and that demonstrate the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. It's slightly different this year, given the pandemic, but still, we still wanted an opportunity to recognize May for being Preservation Month. Preservation Month began as National Preservation Week in 1973. In 2005, the National Trust extended the celebration to the month of May and declared it Preservation Month to provide an even greater opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country, cities, and states. Particularly for the city of San Gabriel, we celebrate Preservation Month because we are a historic community. And with the City Council's support in 2017, the city's Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Ordinance was adopted. And by December the following year, the first meeting of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission meeting was held. Since that time, this commission has met eight times, worked to preserve the bowling alley sign, submitted a certified local government CLG program application to the state, provided feedback on several projects, and is reviewing a draft agreement with the Historical Association that will be coming to the council shortly. Thank you for the recognition this evening and for this proclamation.
Thank you, Arminia. In our binder, and hopefully on the screen, you can see the proclamation. It's, it's a pride of our community to be able to do something like this and have a commission. I just wanted to read the, just the last, whereas, and it goes as follows on the proclamation. Whereas the San Gabriel community continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historic and archaeological surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to the San Gabriel State and National Register of Historical Places, the protection of its traditional neighborhoods, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historical properties. Now therefore I, Denise Manchaca, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Chin Ho Lau, councilmembers Tony Ding, John R. Harrington, and Jason Pooh do hereby proclaim May 20th as National Preservation Month in the city of San Gabriel, and urge the citizens of San Gabriel to join me in the special observance. So, thank you to everyone. I'm sorry, oh, I think I had my, my mic off. Let's start again. I'm sorry. Chief, clerk Sharon Clark, would you like to make the presentation? Or introduce the presentation?
Are you ready for the next item, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. COVID-19 update on city operations. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace, Police Chief Harris, Community Services and Intermission Playhouse Director Perez, and City Manager Lazarato.
Okay, let's begin with Fire Chief Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca, Vice Mayor Liao, members of council. Steve Wallace, Fire Chief City of San Gabriel here. For those of you that can't see me, I'll start tonight with our COVID response update. I'm happy to report that our responses to COVID cases were really, really leveled off in the city. We're down to maybe seeing about one a day now, and the suspected cases that we're going out on, at least for the last two days, have turned out not to be confirmed COVID cases. So that's good news. The other bit of good news is our department still remains 100% healthy. So all the department employees are reporting to work, and we are able to fill all our operational positions without overtime and without covering for anybody that's been sick. The other bit of good news, this is the same thing that the area fire departments are seeing. In our chief calls, we're finding that the call levels are returning to normal as far as other medical calls, and the COVID responses are really, really dropping. The best bit of good news in the fire service is that there was one battalion chief in Alhambra who was very sick with COVID. He's well on his way to recovery and now has had his second negative test. So we're very happy for Chief Shonk Wiler in Alhambra. On Friday, I was notified that the fire department has received a $15,000 payment from the CARES Act to help bolster our ambulance revenues. That since we've had a decrease in calls and transports, our ambulance revenues are dropping, but we now have a bit of assistance from the federal government. This is a payment. This is not anything, it's not a grant. It's not anything we have to pay back. So right now, we're going to begin to review the language of the documentation that came with it and make sure we're happy with that. But we do have that money in hand at this point. Over this last week, and especially today, we've been making a lot of contact with our cooling centers in town. The two main ones we use are the Asian Youth Center and the LA County Public Library. Over the weekend, I distributed some information that was sent out by both CDC and the county, compiled by our Disaster Management Area Coordinator on guidelines for safe social distancing as well as decontamination and sanitizing the cooling centers. That has gone off, are gone out to each of the locations. And we've also got a dialogue going with them to see how we can help, see how we can assist in setting up their social distancing and as well if they need help with decontamination, offering that service. With that, I am ready to answer any questions.
Okay, I was thinking, just maybe waiting for the end, Chief Wallace, get through everyone, and then I'll call on council. Next presenter, Police Chief Harris. You have to turn off the mute. Chief.
I do that every time.
Me too.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I will give you a two-stage briefing, first an operational briefing of the police department's operations, and then a basic overall COVID briefing as it relates to the law branch. Props report that we are at 100% healthy staffing. We are conducting full-service law enforcement activities. We have, as of yesterday, returned to what we call a deployment status level one. What that means for members of the public is that specialized assignment personnel who were assigned to the field have been returned to their specialized assignment and their normal work status. We are still at level one, which means no one in the police department is taking vacations, holidays, et cetera, until such time as the operational situation changes. We're proud to also demonstrate that there are no employee exposures, and like I said, we're fully healthy and conducting business. The police department front counter is open for business 24 hours a day. So if you have a need for our services, please feel free to come in or make the calls to the appropriate numbers. As far as the safer at home initiative, we are still looking for voluntary compliance. To date, we haven't issued any citations, and we've received a lot of voluntary compliance from members of the community, and we're very thankful for that and want to commend the people in the community for really stepping up and meeting the needs. As for crime, crime is down in virtually every aspect, property crimes, violent crimes. The only area that we've had a slight uptick is in the area of domestic violence. And with regard to that, I'll say this to members of the public, we know that tensions can be high with being locked in our homes and those kind of things, and we simply want to remind everybody that the San Gabriel Kind Initiative also refers to our family members. So let's, let's try to consciously show that kindness within our homes and, and make sure that the people we love and keep closest to us, we keep in best regards. We also continue to receive donations and lunches from various groups and folks, and we're very thankful of that. The public responders send out many thanks to all of the people, and some thank you letters will certainly go out. We've been getting inundated with masks and sanitizers, and we love that. It's, it's a lot of extra equipment for us. And the lunches are outstanding. So thanks to, there are some of the council folks who've organized some of the lunch drop-offs, and we are in the police department, do a couple of things. Good cops never get wet and they never go hungry. So we do appreciate, we appreciate everything that you folks are doing for us. It's, it's great. Let me move now, shift gears to the overall COVID briefing. It's very brief. We remind the public, stay informed via our city website, which refers to other apparatus for the county, the CDC, Department of Public Health, and other state endeavors. You can reach out to our website and to our Community Engagement Bureau to get any updated information. And we are currently in the process of planning for our operational changes with the just announced phased reopening by the governor. More of that information will come out as the executive team works on, on how we're going to map that out. But I just want to remind everybody that all of those, all that information will be on our website. So feel free to get there as many times as you can and get that information. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Community Services and Intermission Playhouse Director Rebecca Perez.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca and members of the City Council. Our nutrition program has once again expanded to meet the needs of our local seniors. As mentioned at the last council meeting, community services staff has delivered meals since March 31st so that our seniors are able to stay safer at home. At last report, we were delivering a weekly supply of meals to over 90 seniors. As of today, our number has grown to 219 seniors. We have also delivered masks, our grapevine press publication with puzzles and resources for seniors, and information regarding the census. Each Friday, we have weekly wellness checks for the seniors on our list. We are so pleased to be able to meet this great need in our community. At our last report to the City Council, we provided initial information about the Great Plates Delivered Program. In looking further into this program, staff learned that any seniors participating in our current nutrition program would not be eligible for Great Plates as our program through YWCA is federally funded. Staff did submit an initial letter of interest on behalf of the city yesterday. However, we have since reached out to the county to see if we might be able to partner with them on Great Plates. We'll provide an update to the City Council as it is available. And that's my report tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. We have one more presenter, and then we'll, I'll open it up for questions. City Manager Lazarato.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to talk very briefly about the reopening of San Gabriel, and I'm going to talk about that in two terms. One, as far as the city and all of its businesses, and the second, as far as the city and how we provide services to our residents. On Monday, Governor Gavin Newsom indicated that California had sufficiently had a slowing of the curve. And so he has indicated we're entering stage two, which is the gradual reopening of California. So as soon as the end of this week, he will be issuing orders on how phase two can begin. Most likely, the beginning of, of the reopening will be for businesses like retail establishments, shoe stores, bookstores, that kind of thing, being able to do it in a curbside delivery manner. So folks still won't be able to go into those nonessential businesses, but they will be able to order ahead in some form and be able to pick up items from that, those businesses. That stage will last for approximately two weeks until approximately May the 15th. At that point, we will enter almost fully at stage two, which would be people being able to go into businesses. I want to stress that all of this will still be done with masks, with social distancing. You'll still have to, when you queue in line, will still have to be six feet or more from people around you. If restaurants open, which hasn't been decided yet, but if restaurants open, they will be at a capacity where tables can be more than six feet from each other, and so families would be seated at one table but be no further, or no closer, excuse me, than six feet from any other folks that aren't members of their households. This is all going to be done on a county-by-county basis. So we in Los Angeles County are waiting to hear from our Department of Public Health of how that order will affect our county. The governor recognized on Tuesday, or excuse me, on Monday, that every county in California is hugely different. And so there are counties and communities that don't have much of an effect from COVID-19, and there are other counties like Los Angeles who have had a great impact from COVID-19. So we anxiously await later on this week to see what the county's public health officer will deliver for our county, and then we will be using our social media platforms to get that information out to our residents and business owners as soon as we can. But we do stress that the reason we're doing so well and able to open up at this point even gradually is because, as Chief Harris mentioned, our folks are very much following the safer at home order and, and doing exactly what we need them to do. So we ask for patience. Will we continue this order as long as need be? As far as the city providing services to residents, the police department is open 24/7 as it has been throughout the entire COVID-19 instance. Other departments, we are providing almost every service that we were providing before, but in a virtual manner. So that will remain for the foreseeable future, even when the governor reopens slowly for this stage two. We will still be handling phone calls, emails, online requests. Following probably late May, we will have our city facilities in a situation where we'll have protective glass so that people coming into our lobbies will be protected, residents will be protected when they come and do business. We will still be doing it on an appointment-only basis at that point to make sure our lobbies don't have more than a few people in them and that we're able to practice social distancing. As Chief Harris said, we'll be putting together those plans this week, and we will make sure to keep our websites and our social media accounts updated so that the public will understand how to get businesses, services, excuse me, from the city. We do have all of our public works folks out working and doing everything they've always done in the field. Potholes are being filled, trees are being trimmed, and all of those things are being taken care of. Fire departments in full swing, as Chief Wallace said. Community Services is doing all of the things that they used to do. And one of the best things, I think, is community development is open for business. And so folks who have been trying to do additions or redo to their house and businesses, we, we would love for them to use our online services and continue that and not use this as an opportunity to, to wait. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, well, I'll open it up for our council members. I'll start with Vice Mayor Lau. Do you have any questions?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. First question, so how are we going to notify the business owners? Well, you know, this is phase two now. You're, you're, you're good to go. So is it from Community Development Department or from? Who's going to notify them?
You're exactly right. So it would be our Economic Development Department, which is part of community development. We've put together an email list of over 1,500 businesses that we have contact information for. And so we'll be using that email list and then all of our social media platforms.
Okay, that's great. So, well, another question is for Chief Harris. What's, you know, domestic violence cases have you seen for the, I'll say for the last month? Or average, you know, is it 10 or maybe three? I don't know, you know, how many cases that you encounter?
Right now, some of the cases are still under investigation, so we don't know if they're going to qualify as domestic violence cases. So what I will tell you of the known cases, we used to be at about three, maybe four a month. We are at about three a week as it stands. None of them have been excessively violent, just meet the minimum requirement for a domestic violence charge. So we haven't had a whole lot of real egregious cases, but the tension demonstrates that there's a little bit of upheaval sometimes in the households, and we're trying to address that.
All right, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember John Harrington.
Just wanted to thank the chiefs and Rebecca for the updates. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, I mean, everything fine. Yeah, I thank you all that, like, I meet the department chief for the last two weeks. It really helped me to have some knowledge with our city. Thanks to the City Manager, Mark. Okay, send all of you, like Chief Harris and Chief Wallace, Eric Ward, Rebecca, Greg, and Shannon, and our attorney, the Eric Ward, Rebecca, Greg, and Shannon, and our attorney, the Keith. Only one person I didn't meet that I mean, okay, thank you. Okay, I just use this opportunity. Okay.
Great, so you've been busy with your orientations.
Yes.
Good to see. Great. Okay, and last but not least, Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any further questions, just thanks to all the staff for keeping things going during this crazy time. Thank you.
And I too just wanted to express my pride, my gratitude to the ongoing response with COVID, with the COVID crisis. We will have, for the members of the public, we will have this item at every single agenda meeting, open meeting, public meeting, just to make sure you can see firsthand, you can hear directly from the chiefs, from the directors, from the managers, you know, the work that they're doing. Sometimes it seems a little bit invisible because you're at home and you don't get to see it all the time. Maybe you don't have as much access to social media, but there's a lot of work being done right now. I could tell you firsthand, it's a very fluid situation. It's constantly changing, week by week, day by day, hour by hour. And I think a lot of people could see that, just if you turn on the TV, you can see how things are just evolving very quickly. And, you know, our team is doing such amazing work. They're protecting us and they're keeping the city moving forward. And so I too want to say thank you, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. And, well, with that, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Assistant City Clerk Bonus, please read any comments that have been received for this general public comment section.
No comment had been received at this time.
Okay, next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council or audience requests separate discussion.
Assistant City Clerk, do we have any request for public, from the public to pull any items? And if so, can we?
No.
Comments? Oh, great. Okay, no public comments?
I have not received any, not at this time.
Then I will now ask each council member, yes?
Sorry, yes, I did want to pull some items for clarification in the question.
Which item would you like to pull?
For A2, the correction on the minutes for the meeting of April 21st, and a question on Item C, the playground at Vincent Lugo Park.
Okay. So, so should we, we just proceed and for you to ask those questions and then we can still vote on the items as a whole?
Sure, the first one is a quick correction, I believe. So in the minutes of the April 21st meeting, Item 6A, I just wanted to make it clear that I had moved and we approved only number one of the recommended actions for that item, which was to make the revenue estimate and expenditure appropriation adjustments. The second part of that, which was drawing down of funds from the city's CRBT trust fund, was not approved. And so I just want to make that clear that that, in this item, only part of the recommended action was actually approved.
Is there any comment from the staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. We can make that correction. The last sentence in the paragraph above says that preference to defer the second staff recommendation for later consideration is in there, but I think we can clarify the motion to say that it was only the first item that we took action on. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then the next item was for C?
Yeah, C. I wanted to thank not only Greg and our Public Works Department, but Rebecca, who I think handed this project over to Public Works, and it's been a long time in the making. So I just wanted to confirm, where is the location of this playground within the park?
This is Greg Dvink. The playgrounds will be set up in the grassy area that's, if you go straight back from the exercise equipment towards the trees, which is towards the flood channel, it's against those trees in that grassy area.
Okay, sort of like in the immediate sort of front center of, to the right of the sort of roadway that goes back towards, there's some Public Works buildings there. We also call it the Girl Scouts, Girl Scout Building.
Yes, if you park your car pointing, I guess, towards the exercise equipment, you'll also be pointing straight back towards the trees, and the play equipment will be put right in front of those trees.
Okay, and there's two separate areas here. One seems like the, for lack of a better word, maybe like jungle gym type of equipment, and the other is a swing set. Will they be next to each other contiguous, or how would that layout be?
They are separate from each other. The swing set will be more towards the west along the tree line. I don't know exactly the distance, but maybe 50-ish feet of grass between those two areas.
Okay, I see. Is there a reason that they are separated by that distance?
I'll let Rebecca address that, but my guess is that they are kind of age appropriately different. So the different types of play equipment are suitable for different age categories. We might want to keep the bigger kids on the swings further away from the little kids on the slides type of thing.
One additional comment on that, that Greg is correct, but one additional comment. When we met out, this is Rebecca Perez, sorry. When we met out at the site with our landscape architect to lay that out, and Councilmember Pooh, you'll recall back to that initial council, City Council presentation, and you were the one who recommended that we do add swings, and I 100% agree with that. So we did bring our landscape architect out, looked at the site, and because of the, I'll say narrow nature of, the park is kind of long and narrow, there's not a lot of depth there. To be able to include the slide, pardon me, the swings as part of the playground was challenging space-wise. And so we did need to separate those. As you can imagine, swings take up a lot of space because they have a large fall area around them, fall zone. And so they do require a significant amount of space. And so we did want to include those, and ideally, it would have been as part of the larger playground, but they did need to be separated because of the space allowed essentially in the park.
Great, thanks very much. Appreciate the clarifications.
Rebecca, I just wanted to also clarify, once it's installed, we will need to put caution tape, I'm assuming, because we cannot allow any of the children to play on it yet. Is that correct, until we reach that stage?
Yes, and we've not yet, our current playgrounds are closed. And so we will need to have some secure area around there until that, until the congregate areas within our parks are open. And for those of you that remember our Kaboom Playground, when we built that at Smith Park, as exciting as it is to have a new playground, unfortunately, we had to have that closed immediately after as well. And that was just in terms of the playground needing to kind of set and it's, have the concrete footing set and all of that. So we will definitely need to have that secured because it will be a great sight for people to see. And of course, they would want kids to be on there. So we will have that secured until our congregate areas are open.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are no other items to pull, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification we discussed for A2 for the minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
That's Vice Mayor Lau. And if there's no further discussion, let's take the vote. Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Dean? Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Council for Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liu?
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, a public hearing. I see now. Next item, Sharon?
New business? No problem. New Business Memorandum of Understanding for Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention. Presentation will be made by Police Chief Eugene Harris.
You're on mute, Chief Harris.
I am going to learn to do that right at some point, I promise. Madam Members, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Before you, you have a staff report discussing a memorandum of understanding for interest into a regional task force for auto theft prevention. Police Department staff have researched the feasibility and benefits of entering into an MOU with other public agencies for the task force of regional auto theft prevention in order to combat vehicle theft, vehicle embezzlement, and the ancillary criminal activities associated with the aforementioned crimes. We continuously look for ways to maximize department effectiveness by partnering with outside organizations and joining a regional task force or joint operations of the San Gabriel can utilize the resources of a larger effort in order to combat crime and the related economic and social impacts most successfully. The Task Force for Auto Regional Prevention, or TRAP as it is commonly known, is one such organization. And this particular relationship would be a relationship where we assign a detective to the task force, and that detective is paid for in full by the task force itself. So that would include salary benefits and the vehicle that's used. All of that would be funded by the task force and not from the general fund. So the recommendation from staff is to assign one detective to TRAP and authorize the city manager to enter into the MOU that is attached with the corresponding funding agreement attachment B. And without, I'll take any questions.
Okay, we'll first do clarifying questions from City Council to the chief, and then we'll follow that with public comment. Let's start with the clarifying questions. Councilmember Harrington?
Nothing here. I think it was very clear. Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember, Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to clarify here, under fiscal impact, it basically says that under this program, you get reimbursed, I think, for the detective then that is assigned to TRAP. Does that then mean that this will be a net savings for the city?
Yes, it is a net savings for salary benefits and the cost of the vehicle with all of the operations.
Okay. Would this officer that's assigned, would it still be available for SG assignments? Or is that person then under complete command and control of the TRAP or, you know, joint task force?
Well, it'd actually be twofold. The initial assignment would be under the command and control of the task force. They have specific task assignments, case assignments, et cetera. But we will always have first dibs if we have emergencies or anything that we need to pull him back. We can pull the officer back to handle any San Gabriel issues and then send them back when that issue is done.
Will that officer be housed here at our own police station or housed at the task force facilities?
They'll be at the task force facilities. But what will happen is all of the agencies that are involved in the task force will house the entire team for certain periods of time as operations dictate. So if we have a week-long operation in San Gabriel, then the folks would spend the day in San Gabriel. If we have a week-long function in another city that's engaged, then they would be there, but always subject to call at the home agency.
Got it. In the report, it mentions then that this detective, I mean, are you anticipating that the detective who currently handles vehicle theft investigations would be the person assigned to this program?
No, in this case, the auto theft detective for San Gabriel will continue to handle cases specific to San Gabriel along with the rest of his caseload, as mentioned in the staff report. What the detective we're going to pull from is from our special enforcement team, Advanced Investigations Section. So typically, the cases that this person is going to deal with, deal not only with stolen cars, but all of the crimes associated with stolen cars. So that includes forgery, fraud, embezzlement, and a lot of the white-collar associated crimes that actually facilitate the need for auto theft. And so the goal here is to put a person that has some of that extensive experience so that we can actually do more of the prevention than the apprehension.
Thanks, Chief. I'm just writing down some notes based on that. Okay, I just wanted to confirm that essentially, I guess my only, my only area of concern would be if we were to lose capacity to investigate other crimes because we are now assigning a detective, you know, to essentially work under the task force. But it sounds as if the detective that's, that you're contemplating pretty much handles exclusively auto thefts and crimes related to auto thefts. Therefore, it's, you know, sort of like, you know, he'll be performing essentially the same role except on a regional basis. In other words, we're not losing, we wouldn't lose capacity to investigate other crimes or, you know, other incidents that might come up within the San Gabriel community.
No, in fact, the opposite is true. We won't be losing any capacity. We'll actually be gaining more capacity as a force multiplier. We will have access to resources that we previously did not. And there will be a, you know, on call for any of the agencies that are involved. So there's a significant upside for us.
Got it. All right, thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Dean?
No question.
Vice Mayor Liu?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief Harris, I just have a question. Is this just one detective doing all this work? Or do you have another, you know, alternative, say, another officer that can step in and take over in case this person is sick or not available?
Well, it'll actually be kind of a combination of two things. One, we're still going to have our regular detective that's assigned to auto theft with a host of other investigative desk assignments. But our person that gets assigned to the task, the task force will be housed with a group of officers from the region that will allow us to have access to more of those resources. So it doesn't impact our staffing. What we've done is just retool our desk assignments so that we can most effectively use our personnel. So that's in essence what we did. We didn't take away any capacity to investigate crimes. We simply retooled so that we could actually take on more capacity.
Thank you.
And Chief, I just wanted to commend again your ongoing efforts of finding ways to partner with other organizations and save us money. I'm, as I was reading this, I really couldn't find a downside. I know we're still paying for the detectives' workers' compensation, sick leave, and other kinds of claims. But aside from those costs, it looks like the task force pretty much is picking up everything. Are there any downsides that maybe we just are overlooking here that you can think of?
If there is one, I haven't been able to find it. Everything about this, everything about this is a real win for San Gabriel and the members of this community. I've been asked a question a few times that if it's, you know, sometimes you say if it looks just too good to be true, it might be. But in this case, the number of assignments don't come up that often. It is about attrition, and when those assignments come up, it's usually an invite or somebody reaches out to someone to get somebody on this team. So it's not like every agency in the area can just sign up and say, hey, we want to put our guy on your team. That'd be an opening, you know, so we were reached out to. The main reason was because the people at TRAP saw something in the way that our folks conduct their business. Very proud of that. Very proud of that. And that gave us the open door to kind of participate in this team. As we constantly look for ways to go out and provide even more effective service for the members of this community, sometimes you get lucky and it just appears at your front door and we just have to make sure we grab it and take advantage of it when we can. And that's what happened in this case. We were fortunate to be contacted by people who wanted to associate with us and it was a win-win for us. It's clearly a win for them too, but we're gonna definitely be a beneficiary here.
Great, that was my next question, whether it was a comparative process or by invite only? So it sounds like it's by invite only. Is that correct? You have to be approached?
Yeah, in essence, they don't have enough assignments to go out and hit everybody in the county and say, hey, send us your guys and we're gonna test everybody who might be kind of relevant for a position like this. So they really reach out and try and find the agencies. Maybe geographic location has something to do with it. I think demographics has a lot to do with it as well. And so when they reach out, they're really trying to form a team that can address as many segments of the community, the county community as possible. So they're hitting all of the demographics, whether it's race, gender, you name it. They want to make sure that the team is a reflection of the populations that it's going to serve.
So in the San Gabriel Valley, how many of these programs are taking place? Are we one of the few cities in the West San Gabriel Valley?
There are a few cities that participate in TRAP. Arcadia, LAPD units, some in the South Bay, they're from all over the county. I think that from our city and from Arcadia will be the only ones from the San Gabriel Valley, I think, at this point. Maybe from Pomona, but I have to verify that. I think those are the only two, but it brings everyone together in the area and allows us to take advantage of all of those resources.
Great, well, thank you, Chief. Okay, now I will turn it to the Assistant City Clerk to read any public comments that have been received.
Thank you, Mayor, we have received one public comment from Debbie Kilgore. The officer assigned to TRAP task force is going to be pulled from their regular hours with SGP D. At the end of the comment.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Then I will proceed with council deliberations and discussions. I'll begin again, I'll begin with Vice Mayor Lau. Are there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, I think this is a great, you know, we can work with other cities to do this anti-auto theft. But as I remember, you know, maybe 30 years ago, we have this LoJack advertising TV every day and that prevents, you know, auto theft. But nowadays, I know the modern technology, you know, they have a small device that he already installed in the new cars. Would that cut down the auto thefts? That's my number one question because I look at the numbers, you know, it's, it's 179, I believe, last year. But we can recover 50% of them, so that's pretty good. But how, how can we recover all of them? You know, that's my second question.
Well, there are many types of technology that help mainly with the recovery, maybe not as effective with the prevention. So you have LoJack, which is a recovery element, helps the police find stolen cars. And you have OnStar, especially with General Motors Products and so on, that allow, and certainly aftermarket stuff, that allow you to locate, really effective at helping you locate a car once it's stolen or in some cases, turning off the engine, having remote kill switches and things like that. So there are a lot of technological elements to it. Unfortunately, criminals are very, very smart people. They find ways to get around things. And unfortunately, in today's day and age, the technology can often benefit the bad guy. So it's not just, you know, back in the days, our grandfather's auto theft people where they just come up, smash a window and stick a screwdriver in the key. They're very, these people are very resilient criminals. And they figure out ways to embezzle vehicles, fraudulently obtain them, and then use them for other, other ills. There's ways that they use computers to break codes on doors, things like that. It's a very detailed criminal element. And so it's a really big deal. So what TRAP does is it tries to narrow and give us an edge by using the newest and the latest technology and employing all of the things that you talked about and centrally locating those investigations so that we can concentrate on the prevention effort instead of just the recovery effort.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor, no, no questions, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Pooh.
No further questions, thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Oh, just want to double check the funds from the special revenue, not for our city, the general fund, right?
The funding is coming from the TRAP task force and it's from money that was set aside by the state and it comes out of the vehicle registration. So there was money that specifically set aside in perpetuity for, to fund this task force in order to affect the crimes as listed in the staff report. So that money does not come from the general fund, no sir.
So estimate how much total we can, San Gabriel City can get.
It'll be the full cost of a senior officer at top step pay, the cost of a vehicle, and it'll be all of the benefits associated with it. So maybe Edward or Ken can help me with the numbers on that. But it would be a top step officer and all of those elements I mentioned.
I think, this is Mark Lazaretto, I think, Chief, $150,000 is probably a pretty good guesstimate when you add all the benefits in. But we can provide counsel later on with an exact number.
In the morning, Mark, if you like.
Perfect, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think your microphone is muted.
Oh, my turn now, okay, may I have a motion for the recommendation?
I'll second.
I need a first, I don't think I have a first. So the motion's being made by Vice Mayor Lau, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Harrington. And Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liao.
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca.
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Next item, please.
Consideration to repeal Urgency Ordinance Number 668 temporarily restricting residential and commercial evictions for non-payment of rent due to COVID-19. Presentation will be made by Deputy City Attorney Norma Tovars.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I actually want to start this item off before I handle, hand it off to Norma. There's a threshold issue here and it's similar to what we talked about when we considered adopting this ordinance and I want to bring it up again. We've had a little bit more time to consider it this time and while the answer is the same, it's a little bit less complicated than I made it last time, I guess. The issue is that this ordinance concerns commercial and residential leases and we have a commercial and residential landlord that are both on the city council. So the question arises, does this pose some sort of conflict of interest? And can those members vote on the item? And for clarity, we're talking about Councilmember Pooh and Councilmember Ding. When we looked at it, I mentioned this last time, but when we looked at it more carefully this time, we, I want to explicate what I mentioned before. Last time, we got in a little discussion about how this requires a four-fifth vote. It still requires a four-fifth vote to repeal because we want the repeal to happen instantly. Therefore, it's important that we have at least four people participating. But the good news is, I don't think that this poses a conflict of interest because the definition of conflict of interest excludes situations where the action being considered applies to the public generally. And that also applies, if it applies generally to a particular trade or business or classification. In this case, as you know, this, the ordinance you're considering applies equally to all leases in the city. That's sort of the point of it. So I think it would fall under the public generally exception. Turns out that there's another wrinkle on the public generally exception and that is that if you're taking an action to, in response to a declared emergency, then it also falls under the public generally exception and we've got that exception here in this case as well. So that's my long-winded way of saying, I don't see there being a conflict of interest. And unless you have any questions. And Norma.
I'm sorry, say that again, Keith?
I was getting a bit of it from your microphone.
Okay, is that, is that better?
It is now.
It is now.
I only hear it when I'm talking. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Norma.
Okay, great, thank you. So yeah, so we, I guess about a month ago, when we first passed this ordinance, we, the issue at the time is, you know, things were moving quickly and the purpose of it was to restrict evictions for both residential and commercial tenants in the city in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. At the time, there had been a couple of big orders passed by the governor that essentially allowed local governments to enact these type of protections. And what's happened, what's transcribed since then, is that there's been additional action at both the state and the county level. There had been a county order that had been issued previously, but it had excluded cities. They had only applied to the unincorporated areas of the county. And so however, on April 14th, the county passed or passed an extension to the executive for that.
Norma, we're having trouble hearing you.
For city to consider whether to allow our own ordinance to be repealed in order to have the county protections apply to our residents. And so tonight, I would ask the council to consider whether they'd like to repeal Urgency Ordinance 668, the purpose being to avoid confusion and inconsistencies between the city ordinance and the subsequent state and county rules and orders as well as to provide both residents and business, business tenants, the greater protections that have been granted under the county order that was extended subsequent to when the city passed theirs. And I'm happy to take.
Thank you, Norma. So before I ask for any public comment. Now I hear the echo. Not sure why.
Mayor, did you ask if there was any public comment or council comment?
No, I'm gonna start with the clarifying questions. I was just reminding the community or the audience that, you know, I will ask for public comment after the clarifying questions from city council and staff. So let me begin with, yeah, thank you for the clarifying questions from council. Vice Mayor Lau.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, just have a quick question. So what is the second ordinance from LA County Supervisors? And what's the difference between the second one and first one? The question for Norma, right?
Norma, are you having trouble with the mic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is Mark Lazaretto, at the risk of trying to speak for an attorney. I will answer that question. The main difference, Vice Mayor Liao, is that the original county ordinance didn't cover the cities, the incorporated cities in the county. It only applied to unincorporated county areas and the order didn't cover commercial. It only covered residential. And so we adopted our own ordinance that covered commercial and residential and applied in San Gabriel. And since that time, the county has issued an order that not only covers San Gabriel if we remove our ordinance, but also has a few protections that are better for tenants.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I had a question regarding the language in the county's ordinance. So when I, when I read through the ordinance, it seems like they're really extending this to a full year to pay back rent that has not been paid due to COVID. But also, at the same time, it looks like all the tenant has to do is just claim that their lack of payment is due to COVID. So I wanted to figure out what's the ramifications, say, someone's in there for a year, doesn't pay their rent and just claims, well, you know, I'm collecting benefits, I lost my job, I can't afford it. What happens after that year? Is it a year after the, after the emergency is done or a year after this starts? Or, because to me, it seems like this could go on for three to four years if it really got extended out the way the governor's talking, where he's not going to release the state of emergency until there's a vaccine available. So that, that could be 18 months and so you're going a year past that potentially. So I just want to know how the mechanics of that work.
I can try to, I can try to address that. So the way I'm reading the ordinance, it actually expires as of May 31 right now. So the protection for non-payment of rent is through May 31, unless extended, of course. But for now, it's May 31. The one year is the payback period. So when we're talking about the one-year frame, timeframe, that's, that's the time that's being allowed for tenants to pay back the rent.
Okay, so now, I guess I'm reading it a little differently because it seems like, then they would only apply it about two or three months worth of rent because it started on, what, March 5th? That was the original ordinance or the original declaration of emergency?
That's, that's correct, they're, they're making it effective retroactively to March 4th, I believe.
March 4th, yeah, so that, so then really all.
Right, so potentially, there would be a three-month backlog of rent that would then, let's say, starting June 1, the payback period would begin for the current rent plus the three-month back rent. And the tenant would have, at least the way I'm interpreting it, would have then 12 months to pay the amount that where they got behind the back rent.
Okay, and then the ex, can you remind me the expiration on the city of San Gabriel's ordinance?
Norma, are you looking for it? Are you looking for it?
Oh, I'm sorry, my screen froze, so I missed the question. Oh, I'm I'm sorry, the my screen froze, so I missed the question. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, can you remind me of?
Again, I I need the question repeated apologies.
The expiration of San Gabriel's ordinance.
Oh, yes, the uh San Gabriel's ordinance expires thirty days after the.
I didn't catch a single word.
Yeah, we're having some difficulties. With all of our mics, actually.
Yeah, I think my understanding though, our 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 ordinance is based on the. Uh declaration of emergency, which my point going was that ours is actually longer than the county's. Or potentially, depending if they keep extending theirs. Yeah, the reason I bring that up is because ours is tethered to the the quote-unquote emergency. And um I think that's a better way to do it than to just keep having to come back and extend it because there will be a date where there is no state of emergency declared. Um it will be it will come to a conclusion. And rather than than just rush through this and say, yeah, the counties is great, let's do that. I would prefer, because the county did defer to cities, I would prefer to um. Look through what we like in the counties, if we like some things, and just update the city of San Gabriel's ordinance. I think that's a preferable method. Uh because there are some things that I'm not super. Let's say excited about in the counties, and I think we could do better. Uh because we are a little different than the county in general. So just my main question there is, because the county did reserve. Um jurisdiction to the cities if they have one in place. Um I had a technical question. If we did adopt the counties today. And then two months from now, wanted to adopt a a brand-new ordinance, would that hurt our position rather than amending our ordinance? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I understand the question. If if we um. You're saying if we repeal this and later want to put another one in, what happens?
Yeah, do we maintain that jurisdiction or do we give it up?
I I think we've given it up.
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I'm worried about is right then, we've just given up our power to do what's best for the residents of San Gabriel. I would prefer a method of basically um adopting everything we like, not their ordinance into the ordinance. Into the city ordinance, that'd be a preferable method to me. And, you know, we already have one in place. We can modify it. Add some things we like, you know, make make a good ordinance for us that we then maintain control over in case things change in San Gabriel. Um that don't change countywide. Um e- either for the better or the worse, we're protecting our residents. So I think. To me personally, it's preferable to keep our ordinance and maybe modify it and add the things we like. So that that's my main comment there.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. Uh Mark, did you have a question or uh no? Councilmember Ding, do you have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, but like uh the attorney Keith say, okay, so I still can discuss this matter? Because the conference just.
No, you're you're free to discuss this matter, Councilmember Ding, because this is uh this affects the public generally, not just your financial interests.
Okay. And the the first question, second, I'd like to I the the for the voting, I still. Need uh can vote or can?
You can participate in the discussion and you can vote. All.
Both, okay. Yeah, okay, so. Because the previous there like urging or ordinarily, I'm not involved with it because I'm not a council member yet. And uh it's, yeah, it's thanks like our previous the council member to the uh quickly response. That's good. And uh the right now, uh I want more. Information regarding we really want to repeal our urgent. Or we just like to modify us, so. And based on the I the San Gabriel.
Tony, we're having difficulties understanding you. I'm sorry. We're experiencing some technical difficulties again. Would you like to repeat what you just said?
Okay, right now it's okay?
Yes.
Okay, I, yeah, it's a. These these days, I I hear about the the resident for the both side tenant and landlord, okay? They both have this their own consideration. Okay, and the might consider like uh. Uh also, the if the tenant, they have right to like. Respond to their payment, but a landlord, they talk to the they still need to pay the mortgage. Okay, the how they bank to help them, you know? Because based on them, they are maybe credit every maybe they every month still need to pay the mortgage. So if we extend like uh uh six to the twelve months, maybe hurt. Uh yeah, landlord is also our resident, so. Uh I think maybe it's we need a consideration. But, yeah.
Okay, is there any comments from Norma or Keith? Be clarifying, clarifications or anything else? Okay, okay, thank you, Councilmember. Uh Councilmember Pooh.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I think I'll first clarify with respect to the uh length of time or term of our ordinance. Our our ordinance is is tied to um Governor Newsom's executive order number. Sorry. Uh N dash thirty-seven dash twenty, which was um issued by him on uh March twenty-seventh. Um and the way I read that executive order, it it would be uh that, you know, the protections of. Paragraphs one and two shall be in effect through May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Therefore, I I mean, I I think the 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 reading or the the fair interpretation of our ordinance would be that. Our ordinances uh last for thirty days beyond uh March, I'm sorry, beyond May thirty-first, twenty twenty, so uh June thirtieth or thereabouts. Um is the sort of length of time um of 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 the current ordinance that we have. Um, you know, I uh. I've read over the county's um. Ordinance at length. I don't have too many, you know, too many uh. Quibbles with it. But I could go, I could honestly go either way. I mean, uh. If we wanted to revise ours to import the aspects that we like from the county's um. Ordinance. It would take more time, I think, but it. My my only my only sort of thought or concern about that is is would would it just basically get us to the same place? And 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 just take more time. Um which would mean that in that interim period, there is that um there is that uh potential for confusion as to what exactly applies in the city of San Gabriel. The counties. Not not from our perspective, because we know that um the county's ordinance um exempts cities that have their that have already passed their own ordinance, which is the case for us, but. I'm saying from the landlord or the tenant perspective, you know, if they're not, they don't happen to be tuning into this uh council meeting and listening to this discussion. Then, you know, they're likely won't know which one is 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 effective. So. I think at this point, I would favor simply repealing our ordinance and going with the county's um ordinance.
Well, we still have discussion after public comment, but um.
Oh, I see. We're not in that, well.
No, it's all clarifying questions. Yeah, we still have to hear from the public.
Okay, sorry, that I lost track where where we were.
Okay.
And on the item then. All right, then I I guess I'll reserve some other my my other comments uh to uh to that portion, but I will, I'll simply note that the. The county's ordinance is a little bit more. Detailed in some ways. It's not, it's true, it's not tailored for the city of San Gabriel, but uh. But um. But in any case, I think that uh, you know, we can discuss some of those differences when when we get to the discussion portion. I don't have a, I don't have any clarifying questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lau.
Well, I I I already did my comment, but uh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, uh we should open up for public comments now.
Okay, I actually have a a few clarifying questions.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Um so um I was just gonna open this up uh to the staff in particular. Um I I know we we've talked about um. You know, there's some mention about um providing more resources uh for the residential and commercial tenants when they do have questions or disputes. So I wanted to ask the staff, when we first passed the ordinance. My understanding is out of all the COVID issues, I mean, that was the one that was taking a lot of time from our staff because. Because of the questions. And if we uh decide to follow the ordinance six six eight from LA County, that would really free up the staff, but more importantly. There would be a dedicated resource that our our residents, whether they're the tenants or the landlords, that there is a um an LA County hotline. That has the expertise that could really respond to our uh res to our residents, whether tenants or landlords. I'm kind of going in circles here, but I just wanted to. Make sure I understood that from staff. Maybe, Mark, you can respond to that question because. It's one thing passing an ordinance and making sure it's perfectly tailored for a city. But the other side is kind of weighing the cost that's involved. Um and and really, are we serving our residents to the best of our capacity? Uh our ability uh if we pull away from LA County. Uh and again, I know LA County's ordinance isn't perfect. However, um I think there's some benefits there for everyone. Could you speak to that, Mark?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Um it it's true what you said, that of all of the issues we dealt with, that when we adopted our ordinance. That was the one that caused the most staff time uh for us to deal with on a singular issue. We had um several probably more than two dozen calls. In the two weeks after we passed that ordinance, and they were probably equally from tenants as well as landlords who had questions. When we were able to respond to them as best we could about what the mechanics of our ordinance were. But I have to tell you, it was very unsatisfying for probably everybody who uh called in because of the fact that basically we told them it's a civil issue between the landlord and the tenant. And that we adopted the ordinance to protect tenants. Uh but that uh it was a civil matter, and so your best bet would be to, if you can't work something out between the landlord and the tenant, hire an attorney. The county has set up resources specifically for the this ordinance and has um hotlines for um. Uh help for tenants. I'm not sure how they help landlords, but I am certain that they they help tenants. Um and that would take a burden off of us. I will say that those calls died down um after the middle of the month, and I imagine that that is coinciding when people either didn't pay their rent or paid their rent. And it wasn't an issue anymore. So I don't know, um now that we're a few days past the first of the month, whether we'll have calls again. Or whether that issue is passed and and it's not going to be a staff burden anymore. But I will tell you, for those first two weeks, it was um quite a bit of staff time.
Thank you. Okay, I'll. That's all I have for clarifying questions. So now um I'll turn it to the assistants for public comments. If if any.
Mayor, we received a total of nine public comments, so bear with me. I'm gonna read them one by one. The first one is from Danielle Lighter Perez. And it reads. Dear Honorable Mayor Manchaca and members of the city council. At the May fifth city council meeting, an urgency ordinance will be considered for adoption, which would repeal the city's current ordinance in favor of superseding the Los Angeles County. Board of Supervisors revised executive order eviction moratorium of April fourteen, twenty twenty. As well as any future action taken by the county on this matter. As the city council discusses and considers such action, we encourage the council to recognize the value and importance of maintaining. Local authority over housing issues and the ability for the city council to address the specific local needs. And circumstances of all San Gabriel residents and housing providers today and in the future. Further, we urge the city council to evaluate each of the county's amendments individually and assess whether they should be incorporated into the city's current urgency ordinance. The global coronavirus pandemic has in an instant fundamentally changed all our lives. San Gabriel, among many other jurisdictions, are implementing health and safety protocols, including sheltering in place. Social distancing and mandated closures of schools and non-essential businesses in the hope that it will impede further spread of the virus. The world we live in today looks entirely different from the one we lived in just a month ago, and it continues evolving daily. Businesses have been closed or were possible have directed their employees to work remotely. Many individuals and families have been impacted by reductions in work hours or layoffs. The effects of the sudden business closures, coupled with dramatic increases in unemployment, have caught everyone off guard. In the durex and many and have many of us questioning how we will meet our ongoing financial obligation. The multi-family rental housing business, much like a multitude of industries, small businesses. And the individuals whose livelihood are dependent upon those industries have through no fault of their own been detrimentally impacted by COVID nineteen. The Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles urges the city council to take a comprehensive and balanced approach in recognition of the detrimental impact of COVID nineteen. On both the city's residents and businesses, all of whom need support during this most challenging time. The Los Angeles temporary, the Los Angeles County Temporary Eviction Moratorium, as recently amended by the Board of Supervisors. Extends the repayment period for past due rent from six months following the termination of the executive order to twelve months. Prohibits the eviction for unauthorized occupants, pets. Or nuisance necessitated by or related to COVID nineteen emergency. That's the end of the three minutes. The next public comment I will be reading is from Isaac Wang. And it reads the following. Dear Councilmember Chin Ho. I am a rental property owner of the city of San Gabriel. And I am quoting an excerpt from my friend and my attorney Greg Anderson regarding council decision possibly extending rent. Deferrment for twelve months. Please consider these possible points before you vote on this matter. Thanks. To be fair to the property owners. And not inadvertently harm the San Gabriel rental housing and commercial properties, San Gabriel's ordinance should. San Gabel's ordinance should focus on tenants that are verifiably impacted by COVID nineteen and. On the amount of rent that reasonably cannot be paid. A fair plan should include the following. Reasonable determination of the amount of monthly rent that cannot be paid by a tenant due to COVID. This requires a personal financial statement from the tenant showing all current income, including care's act benefits and all expenses. This could be essentially the same as the standard rental application provided when the tenant first rented the unit. Sample forms for this are in existence, and a committee appointed by the city could respond with recommended forms within a few days. And a procedure for remediation followed by the binding arbitration. Could be established for when an owner and a tenant disagrees as to the appropriate amount of rent to be withheld by a tenant due to COVID. These could be the standard procedures already commonly utilized. In California real estate and a committee appointed by the city could quickly respond with recommendations. Lastly, what is rationale for allowing San Gabel residents to only accrue and not pay rent? And why should this not extend to all goods and services? A more equitable approach would be for the city to verify the financial condition of the San Gabel residence with COVID nineteen hardship. Or accept their self-certification. Determine the percentage reduction in income and then pursuant to the ordinance, provide that certified residents are only required to pay their designated percentage. For all goods and services purchased by the city of San Gabel. This would include rent and the spread. And spread the burden. Rather we to all vendors. Businesses and services providers and not just property owners. If the city has the power to control rents and private rental property, it certainly has the power to control the price for all other goods and services in the city of San Gabel. This would be the fairest thing to do. The above or something similar would provide fairness and certainty. For both property owners and tenants in a timely manner and minimize the likelihood of a catastrophic. Unintended consequences to the San Gabel rental housing and commercial property. San Gabel looks forward to your reasoned rational and fair determination. That's the end of that public comment. The next public comment is from Teresa Iver. Dear Mayor, Councilon Staff, my name is Teresa Iver, and I am the West San Gabel Valley Organizer with the United Way Everyone in Campaign. Thank you for listening to the tenants and housing experts and seeking to strengthen San Gabel's eviction moratorium ordinance. I commend you for passing a local ordinance to protect a tenant's rights during COVID nineteen. However, we are starting to realize the long-term implications for COVID nineteen and its and its effect on income. Data collected by LHSA and the Pasadena Housing Department shows that a growing number of people who fall into homelessness. Are renters who are no longer able to afford their rent. Providing tenant protection is the most effective way to prevent growing homelessness. Keeping someone in their housing is easier and cheaper than building new housing and providing homeless services. We do not know how long COVID nineteen will last, and we do not know if or when second or third fourth wave of COVID nineteen will hit. Strengthening San Gabel's eviction moratorium ordinance is a proven tool to prevent additional homelessness. I ask you to adopt the county's eviction moratorium ordinance. It is a well-thought-out ordinance crafted by many experts within the county. It takes into account the long-term implications of COVID nineteen and puts human lives first. The county's ordinance provides an opportunity for tenants to have up to twelve months to pay back their rent. It takes away the burden for tenants to prove that they have lost of income. And it strengthens policies around landlord harassment. I have heard horror stories of landlords harassing tenants to provide a wide array of documentation. In order to allow the post-bulging of rent, including bank account statements and pay pay stubs. Such harassment and pressure for documentation infringes on the security concerns for tenants. There are many great mom and pop landlords in San Gabel, and I encourage them to have a meaningful conversation with their tenants. To figure out fair pay arrangements. The ordinance is intended to specifically support tenants whose owners are foreign investors and who prioritize profit over lives. I also ask the council to consider adding a provision prohibiting rent increases for rental units until the proposed ordinance ends. And I encourage the council to take. To create a rental assistance program to help renters and landlords alike. That is the end of that public comment. The next public comment is from Eric Sonata. And it reads the following. San Gabel City Council and City Staff, I am writing to submit public input to item sixty eight on tonight's agenda. I urge the council to repeal the city's urgency ordinance from the six six eight in order to afford greater financial protection under state and county rules. Businesses throughout the world are doing what must be done to battle the COVID nineteen pandemic. Those who are in the business of providing housing and services as well. While businesses such as retail and restaurants are closed at the expense of the economic hardship. It is necessary to prevent the spread of the virus. In many ways, the business of housing is even more critical because the entire principle of sheltering in place depends on it. Having to venture out to double or triple up in accommodations put all at a higher risk. Because unlike sharing a space at a restaurant or a shop, sharing living quarters is twenty-four seven. Also note that the state and county boards do nothing to prevent landlords from eventually getting paid. So I ask how this particular class of business, the housing business, somehow expects and demand risk-free protection. And it does so at the expense of those who can be supported. You have no doubt heard from the landlord and rental property lobby who are angered at the recent portrayal of the avarice and. Who ask to be seen as citizens having bills to pay too. But aren't they generalizing as well as assuming that renters will exploit protections even if they do not need them? Mutual trust is needed here. For the renter who has lost their job cannot afford housing. It is a matter of life and death. While landlords' plight should not be ignored, their assistance comes from. At a federal level. As council members, it is your duty to protect those who you can during this crisis. It's a fundamental and awesome responsibility that is at the heart of local government. That's the end of that public comment. The next public comment comes from. Matthew Buck. And it reads the following. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, on behalf of the California Apartment Association. I am writing to request that you work closely with the housing organizations in these difficult times. And on the consideration to repeal San Gabel Valley's current emergency eviction moratorium. To allow Los Angeles County to supersede the city's ordinance. CAA understands that the coronavirus outbreak presents a health and financial crisis to all Californians. And as an industry, we have an important role to play to work with our residents as we get through this. We are concerned that San Gabel Valley does not fully understand the implications and negative consequences of the county's ordinance. Particularly when rent is unpaid or deferred for an unreasonable amount of time. San Gabel Valley is an is exempt from the county's unreasonable measures as you have implemented. Your own moratorium. We urge you to maintain a reasoned approach. We urge you to consider the following. The deferral period for rent should remain at six months. As the crisis continues. There is time to consider extending or reviewing as we move forward. But twelve months at this time is difficult for owners who have major expenses that still require payment. Such as property tax, mortgage payments, or necessary upgrades. A tenant should provide documentation that their loss of income is directly related to COVID nineteen outbreak. The moratorium should only apply to non-payment of rent. All other lease violations should not be included. This is a reasonable request. Adopt the state guidelines for a moratorium on eviction. Governor Newsom realizes it's critical to protect renters and landlords equally, and the San Gabel Valley should follow suit. Renters facing financial turmoil because of this coronavirus outbreak should not have to worry about keeping a roof over their heads. Housing providers need consideration and relief as well. The expense and financial obligations have not been relieved for all parties. Let's find a consistent equitable approach that will help the entire community, including small businesses. And housing providers get through the difficult time while maintaining their health, their homes, and their financial security. Thank you for your consideration during this uncertain time. The next public comment I'll be reading is from Sean McMorris, and it reads the following. Dear Mayor and San Gabel City Council, I would like to express my support for the repeal of urgency ordinance number six six eight. So that the city of San Gabel will be covered under the county's tenant protection for the remainder of COVID nineteen crisis. As a San Gabel resident and a tenant, I am very appreciative of the city's council's passage of urgency ordinance number six six eight. It was a timely, it was timely and greatly needed. However, now that the county has issued even stronger protection, it is important for San Gabel to have a tenant protection that are just as thorough. Rather than adopting a new city ordinance to reflect the county's protection. It is easier to simply repeal the city's current ordinance and allow the city to fall under the umbrella of the county's protection. An additional benefit to allowing the county to encompass San Gabel on this matter is the county has greater resources to aid tenants. And enforce protection. Therefore, I support the repeal of ordinance number six six eight. And the de facto approach. Or the de facto adoption of the county's tenant protection during this time of crisis. That's the end of his comment. The next comment I'll be reading is from. Reverend Ray Chang Huang. And it reads the following. Dear San Gabel City Council Members. I am a Presbyterian pastor and a community organization organizer with LA Voice that serves in your city. I was thrilled to see that tonight you are considering repealing the eviction moratorium. San Gabel passed in favor of the stronger eviction moratorium passed by the county. At this moment. Where so many of our members' residents. Are expecting loss of wages and real threat of eviction, I am proud that you are standing with them so that our communities. Can stay in their homes without fear of losing their homes. Please repeal your eviction moratorium tonight so that our communities can survive and thrive through these crises. Thank you for your thoughtful and powerful leadership in this moment for being a leader in San Gabel Valley. I hope other cities may follow your steps with gratitude. The next public comment I'll be reading is from. Judy Lu. And it reads the following. Dear City Clerk, good evening. I know there is a meeting to talk about the debt between tenant and landlord, so I want to share some people's opinions to a member of Congress. First of all, I thank for helping tenants during the difficult time, and I always support for the city's policies. Now I'd like to say a lot of house owners are not easy too. It's because most of them buy a house from bank loan and repay loans from the rent. I heard many people are worried about the capital chain rupture. Then banks are on sale with many houses by low in price. Finally, results in the overall economy is weakening. Therefore, many house owners request member of Congress lawmaking to help them with the bank loan. On the whole, I just represent them wither. The email to express their ideas, even though I don't have any house property. I hope member of Congress think about it and give them the help. They all appreciate it a lot. Sincerely, Judy. The last public comment I'll be reading tonight is from Paul Padilla. And it reads the following. Dear Councilmembers. I sincerely hope this email finds you doing well. However, as I wrote you last month, thousands of your constituents are not COVID nineteen. Is weakening havoc on our community, both people and businesses, just as it is on our state, our nation, and our world. I called on you on April first to take big, bold, strong actions to help and protect. The people and businesses of San Gabel. Instead, you a pretty small, timid, weak. City ordinance. San Gabel needs and deserve much better leadership from you. On April first, I urge you to pass city ordinance that, among other things, would not have forced people. And businesses to pay back all past due rent within six months. You refuse. I ask you to prohibit late fees and interest on back rent. You refuse. I ask you to impose rent control in form of a rate freeze. You refuse. I ask you to impose moratorium on no-fault eviction. You refuse. I ask you to ban section eighty evictions. You refuse. I ask you to impose a water and utility shut-off ban. You refuse. Thankfully, the Board of Supervisors of Los Angeles County took some of these measures themselves, demonstrating the leadership. The people and businesses of San Gabel needed from you. Therefore, I urge you to adopt tonight's urgency measure to adopt the county's ordinance. But I also ask you to consider what more can be done to direct staff to return to you with recommendations on how to further help. And protect the people and businesses of San Gabel. For example, among other things, I call on you to pass a resolution calling. For a bill of Congress from Congress for rent cancellation and mortgage for mortgage forgiveness. In the meantime, for banks not forgiving mortgages, I call on you to extend to twenty-four months. The period of unforgiven rent repayment and prohibited evictions after that time for non-payment. Non-payment of such back rent should be collected using standard debt collection practices, not under threat of eviction. It will take people and our economy years to recover from COVID nineteen. Even if the virus were to disappear tomorrow. Sincerely, Paul. That's the end of public comments tonight.
Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, we'll now proceed with council deliberation and discussion. Let's start with Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go back and revisit the difference between going to the county ordinance and keeping our ordinance and possibly modifying it. I read through the county ordinance again. And I understand the resources the county has, but nothing in the county's ordinance. Says those resources are not available to any resident of the county. Whether there is this their city has. An ordinance or not. It just says the terms of the city's ordinance will supersede. The terms of the counties. So if you read through it, all of those resources mentioned are still available to the residents of San Gabriel. So that's when I say we should tailor it to us. There are some things in the county that I don't think we should adopt. There's a lot of good things there. All of the resources are available to all LA County residents, so they couldn't have like, so for example. Someone helping out and they would ask, oh, are you a resident of San Gabriel? You're not going to get that benefit. That's not how the county operates. If you're if you're inside the county, you're going to, those services are available to you. So I don't think that's really. If we wanted to, we could just refer people to some of those county programs and just have staff with a list. But I really do think some of the concerns brought up in public comment can be better tailored by us rather than relinquishing our rights to. The the county. I mean, at that point, why not just become unincorporated, let the county make our rules? I mean, that's kind of what we're doing. I really think we need to make the rules. And I don't think it causes confusion because if if any tenant did. Go to an attorney and say, hey, my landlord's doing this or this, or the first thing that attorney can do is say, where do you live? And they're going to look up an ordinance in San Gabriel, and they're going to apply the San Gabriel ordinance. So. If you have an attorney that's confused as to where you live, you need to get a new attorney. So I don't really see that as an issue. So I really think once we give, I just want to clarify with the city attorney one more time that. Once we give up our right, we are not able to draft another ordinance.
I don't know if that's correct. I I thought you were asking me before. I mean, when if we repealed this tonight, it's repealed on an urgency basis, and therefore. Our ordinance is no longer enforceable from that moment forward. If we. In the future, come up with a new ordinance. Norma, do you have a thought on that? I think our, I think the intention of the county's ordinance is that our ordinance later adopted would still apply. Do I have that right, Norma?
So Councilwoman Harrington, can you just clarify for me? Are you saying if we repeal and adopt something new? Or are you talking about amending our existing ordinance?
I'm talking the the former scenario. If we repeal tonight and then. If we repeal tonight and then decided two months from now, we want to adopt something new. Because just the
Yeah, I, I have to look into that. I don't have an answer.
Because to me, the way, the way I read it, and I, you know, really, I don't want to get into the nuance of it, but those jurisdictions that have an ordinance in place, and I, and to me, at the time they adopted this.
Right, so we would be exempt based on that reading.
And then, once we do not, we wouldn't have an ordinance in place. And so, could we write an, so, for example, could we come up with an ordinance, how county has one? If we never had one in the first place?
Yeah, I think we could, and we would, and we would fall under that exemption.
Could it be less restricted?
I think it would be, yeah, it would be a question of what applies at what time period.
Yeah, then we'd be causing more confusion. Okay. That's just my main concern is, I really think we have one in place, we did all the work of getting it, and now we're just kind of saying, eh, let the county take it. I just don't, I'm not for that, so. That's my two cents.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Dean?
Yeah, okay. Based on my understanding, okay, previous the ordinance, it's based on, because the county don't have the, the urgent ordinance. So we base on the state, oh, just tailored by our city of San Gabriel.
At the time, we, our, our city ordinance was more expansive than what was available from the state statewide moratorium. The state moratorium did not apply to commercial tenancies, only to residential. And so that, that, and it didn't have, there were several other aspects of our city ordinance that were not included. The state, you know, quote unquote, moratorium was really just a suspension of eviction for sixty days. So ours was intended to be more expansive than the state. And the county's order, that was in effect at the time, did not apply to our city, only to the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay. So how, the state ordinance, it's sixty days. So for our city current ordinance, it's, it's six months, right? I just, I just tried.
It's two different, it's two different things. The, the sixty days has to do with how, how long the ordinance is in effect. So the state currently, the executive order that Councilmember Pooh mentioned earlier, that expires on May thirty one. The county's actually also expires on May thirty one. So think about it as, like, this, the, the suspension or the moratorium exists for a certain period of time. For now, both the state and the county expire or in effect through May thirty one. The city protection extends for an additional thirty days, so essentially, June thirtieth. That's, that's when it's effective. Separately, there's, there are payback periods, and the payback periods vary. The state doesn't even address that. The county, the city's ordinance has a four month, no, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and eighty days, so six month payback period at the city level. And the revised county order provides for a twelve month payback period. So it's two different things.
Okay. How about state, the payback area? The city, our city is a hundred and sixty, eighty day, and county is a twelve months. And California state is how many?
The state is silent. They don't specify a payback period.
Okay. All right. So beside, excepted like a hundred and eighty days and a twelve months difference with the county, what else the difference in the county?
The, the biggest difference is the, the key differences are the payback period. Another key difference is the loosening of restrict, of requirements for documentation. So essentially, the county is permitting tenants to self-certify as opposed to being a little bit more, and I'm not saying that the city's is more draconian, but, you know, having a little bit more of a higher threshold for requirements as far as documentation. So the, the county's essentially is more liberal in that regard. There are also some more expansive protections in terms of what is considered permissive for why not to pay rent. It's, it's just a lot broader as opposed to a more narrow definition of unable to pay rent due to explicit things related to the coronavirus, which is in the city's ordinance. There are also some explicit prohibitions against landlords harassing or intimidating tenants. But those are the primary differences.
Okay.
I guess one other thing I should mention in terms of a difference, where the city's is a little bit more permissive is the notice requirement. The county's notice requirements are seven days from when the rent is due, with a caveat for extenuating circumstances. Whereas the city ordinance allows a tenant to provide notice to their landlord within fourteen days.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Norma.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude your questions, Councilmember? Dean?
Okay. It, the question, it's for right now, is it possible? We have to, the question is that we have to make a decision today to vote, or we just right now the consideration?
Well, it is up for a vote if, I mean, we, we can vote, we can table it. I mean, that's why we're having this discussion, to see what direction we would like to take.
Yeah, it, I guess, one way to answer the question is, right now, you've got the protections in place of the city ordinance that you adopted. That will continue if you take no action. On the other hand, if you take action tonight, then you'll have the, the county rules in place. But we could revisit this question again at any time in the future, if, if we want. Not, not anytime in the future. At some point, the county's ordinance is going to run out. But as far as the, the need for it, that's up to you guys to decide.
Okay.
And can I just add a third option? The no action would be yes, we sort of breathe, we essentially revert back to our, as is ordinance. Repealing would relinquish to the county. And then, a third option would be what Mr., Councilwoman Harrington was mentioning, with some sort of amendment. And we would give direction to staff as to what types of amendments we would want to potentially, I can't better.
Yeah, I, hmm. The consider, I think, to try help, like, our tenant and landlord both have the win-win situation, so that's our consideration. Okay. And, oh, yeah, by the way, our city have any, like, like, chance to talk to the, if, like, for the landlord, mostly like, for they are, it's have a bank loan, right? Is it, we can help let the bank to defer their loan payment to, or we, we don't have this kind of authority, or we have it? No.
If I understand your correct question, you're saying, do we have the power to forgive loans or help people with the mortgages? The answer, if that's the question, the answer is we don't.
Yes. Or they have deferred the payment, you know?
I, I think that's a no.
I'm sorry, yes, the answer is no.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, or?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, I already kind of said what my position is. I just want to clarify with staff, then, are we aware of any litigation that has arisen as a result of the county's order? And whether that litigation is directed, then, I guess, where the litigation would be directed? Or, I guess, are we aware of any lawsuits against the county under its ordinance with respect to its ordinance?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean there aren't any.
My
Yeah, I'm not aware of any either.
Okay. And I'm assuming, yeah, that's right. I'm assuming if we haven't been informed of any, there's not been any of that kind of activity directed at us either thus far.
No, Councilmember Pooh?
Yeah.
I've not heard of any lawsuits filed against us for that.
Okay. Because where I'm going with this, in a way, is also, it's all, is also that, not only do I think that the county's ordinance is clear in some respects, in terms of its definitions of financial impacts related to COVID nineteen, granted, the longer period of time for repayment is, I think it's a little bit long, but at the same time, you know, for such a substantial impact, like, as COVID nineteen has had for so many of our community members, you know, maybe it is warranted to allow up to a year after May thirty first. So essentially, and, and of course, what I would say as well is that it doesn't mean that, the ordinance itself actually encourages landlords and tenants to work out a payment plan. In other words, in other words, the ideal situation is that landlords and tenants can have open and open discussions with each other, such that, you know, if partial payment is possible for some of the months for which the ordinance applies, then, you know, you know, that could be worked out. If repayment of some of the back rent that's owed can be done a little bit at a time, you know, that can be done as well. It doesn't mean that it's just, you know, the intention is just to push any back rent to one big lump sum balloon payment at the end of the repayment period. So, so actually, you know, not only that, but I, you know, I would somewhat disagree with Councilmember Harrington's characterization. I'm not sure that county resources would be available to City of San Gabriel residents if we have our own ordinance in place. I would be willing to bet that the, the county would take the position that, you know, you need to, you, you need to, you know, since you have a local ordinance in place that has different rules from, from us here in the county, that you need to look to your city to, for any guidance or assistance. So for all of those reasons, I think I do favor repealing our ordinance in favor of the counties. I will say that a lot of work went into drafting and, and discussing and crafting our ordinance. I think it's a good one, it's just that, under the circumstances, the need for consistency between, throughout the county and with ourselves, and also the need for, I think, being able to direct people who, whether they're landlords or tenants, you know, who, who might have issues towards an agency that has greater resources than we do for that type of assistance, I think. I think that for those reasons, I really, and to be honest with you, I, I feel like it is a bit of a liability shield to, to have the county ordinance in place rather than our own. So, so that would be, you know, my thoughts on, on whether or not to repeal our own ordinance. So, and again, I, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, I was heavily, I was mayor at the time, so I was heavily involved in the drafting of that ordinance. So, so it's sort of like sending one of your, you know, putting, I don't know, putting one of your, I, I, I don't know what the right analogy is, but in any case, you know, I think on a policy level, it's just the best thing to do, for us to do, to basically go with the county ordinance, and rather than have, you know, these conflicting rules of applying, even as between, potentially between neighboring, you know, well, this, this whole situation does, does create this patch, this patchwork of, of different rules in different jurisdictions, meaning the whole COVID nineteen situation. But I think for our own purposes, it's best, it's best to be just consistent with the county on, in this respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lau? You're on mute, Vice Mayor.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to answer Councilmember Dean's questions. So for, you know, most of the prominent owners or commercial property owners, they have private mortgages with, you know, big banks like Chase, Bank America, Wells Fargo. And there's not really a help, because this is controlled by the federal government. And the only people that can get into this is our congress members. And so this morning, I asked our Congresswoman Judy Chu and see if there's any help that coming from the Congress. And she mentioned, there's a CARES Act, but these are for, you know, VA loan, Fannie Mae. These are government lending for private homes. So they have, they do have a twelve month protection and sixty days moratorium for foreclosure. But however, majority, I was saying, ninety-nine percent of our property owners, they don't, you know, get the loans from, from those type of lending. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, how we can help those tenants and our property owners. Because as you know, if, if the, this coronavirus lasts longer, say, a year or two, nobody, not even, you know, those multi-million dollars corporation can last. nobody, not even, you know, those multi-million dollars corporation can last. So eventually, the government will have to bet up. So that will be the scenario. But for San Gabriel, because all of our business are owned by moms and pops, you know, private family business, they own those. So they don't have that huge capital to last, I would say, a long-term time. Right now, we have that ordinance last, we were given six months to pay back. And I think that's is stretching out a little, but I agree, you know, at the time, I thought, well, you know, we want to help the tenants because for them to pay back. One other thing is if they lost their job, they have to file unemployment benefits, right? Right away. And of course, you know, they file for CARES Act, they give their $1,200, but also at worst, I mentioned that before, at worst, if they looking for federal government housing authority to apply for Section 8, and so they can get the, you know, housing authority subsidies, and they can pay the rent. But for the property owners, they don't get any help. If you talk to the banks right now, you know, asking for, oh, well, what about forbearance agreement? You know, they don't, they don't say anything. You you apply, they don't give you any definite answer. Some of, some of the big one, you know, and they're a nice one, they will defer three months, three months of mortgage payments, and which is wonderful. But however, if you don't pay this three months mortgage payment, everything's gonna add up. You know, after four months, you have to pay originally mortgage payment plus whatever last three months you owe. But if they don't receive the rental income from residents or business people for a year, and that is the issue that's coming up. How can they sustain a year without income? You know, if we can foresee this, okay, a lot of people are gonna say, well, you know, I don't get rental income, I'm not gonna pay the mortgage payment, I'm not gonna pay utilities bills, I'm not gonna pay trash bills, I'm not gonna pay, well, even property tax. But who gonna help them? No, because right away, banks are gonna foreclose them, you know, with three months of time. And then we're gonna see a lot of upending properties. And who's gonna end up paying more? Actually, it's the tenants, you know, if if it foreclosed and sold it to an investor, yeah, all these investors will get their money back, they will double their rents, you know, for the new tenants. So actually, it's not gonna be, like you said, councilmember Ting, win-win situation. It's not going to be that way. So hopefully, we can get certain help for property owners that they can get something to relieve from these lenders. But so far, we haven't heard anything from the Congress yet, you know, because again, it might take a couple of months, but right now, you know, maybe there's a help for paycheck protection program PPP, or idle loan, that's the emergency for from this SBA loan. But majority of people apply, haven't got anything yet, even, you know, for this SBA loan. I believe, you know, it's just a week ago, it was eight million people apply. So it's overwhelmed, you know, they shut down for a week, not doing anything for SBA. So we can see, this is a serious, serious situation that we're gonna face. So we want to help our tenants, we want to help them to stay in our cities. So what we could do is maybe the city can offer some kind of compensation. Okay, if they show us, well, we suffer from the job loss, we don't have, well, that's what they call the self-certification, we don't have enough income to pay the rent, well, city has CDBG funding, we can use that, you know, say $300,000, and we give $500 each month to the people that underwater, they cannot pay the rent, we give them $500 a month. And maybe for whatever months, three months, four months, that money that still can last. But again, they have to be qualified. So I think, you know, we, the city can set up a website and ask the tenants or, you know, anyone that that's that's under the pressure right now, under this job loss situation, they can apply. But again, they have to show, you know, what kind of loss income that's coming to this family or him. And then, I guess we can qualify. If the city doesn't want to do this type of work, I believe we can work with nonprofits, for instance, Attorneys Association. They probably willing to work with these tenants and say, well, you know, we can help you, but also at a new time, working as mediators, you know. And so it doesn't have to be just one straight law that covers for everybody. No, it's not. Just for instance, in our city, some restaurants doing very good business, McDonald's busy, you know, our supermarket's very busy. So but others suffering, there's no customer. So it cannot apply just one rule to everyone. So I think the best way is maybe stick to the original resolution, don't do anything, because we give six months to pay back. I think that's, you know, pretty, yeah, six months, because just think about it, if they cannot pay the rent for a year, it will never, I guarantee you, almost 90% will not catch up for paying the back rent. So six months is very reasonable, and we want to help them. And maybe the city can help them, and maybe the nonprofits, we all can work together and to go through this hardship. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'm the last one to comment, and I'll try to make it brief, because I think everyone is really bringing in some thoughtful considerations. For me, I don't want to delay this any longer. I believe that we owe it to our tenants to make a decision tonight. I I believe that the county has spent the time, the energy, the resources to put something together, that again, is not perfect, but it does provide the protections that we need at this time. I don't believe we're gonna have a win-win. Landlords have their their concerns, mostly financial, and we as a city cannot be involved with any kind of loan, loans that they do have with their banks. That's not part of our jurisdiction. I would like, I would like for us to make a decision. If we decide not to repeal tonight, then I guess it stands, Keith, if you can let, you know, confirm that, we don't repeal the ordinance, and that stands for now. And then we would have to work with our city staff to come up with a new ordinance, which could take, what, another two weeks or longer? I guess we can call an emergency meeting also, if we want to put something together. Is that correct, Keith? Is there?
Well, I'm, yes, yes, it's correct that if we do nothing, our ordinance continues as is. Yes, we can bring it back to a subsequent meeting with any changes as directed by the city council. The only part I don't know is the timing of that, in terms of when it can get done, you know. I think we do have a, I don't want to volunteer this, but I think we've got a special meeting planned for next week. So that would be the next time we're getting together.
Okay. But we would still have to come together and provide comments first, feedback to our staff at one meeting, and then another meeting to actually finalize it and vote on it. So it's really, I think, a two-meeting process.
Yes, although we could take comments at this meeting.
Okay.
At one-meeting process.
It could be reduced to.
I don't, I don't know if anyone's ready to do that, but.
Yeah, I I think it would be better just to wait for the following meeting, because then we can have more, hopefully thoughtful comments and more time to look at it, if we want to go back and refine our existing policy. Those are my thoughts. So I guess I'll I'll open up to see if there's anyone interested in going with the recommendation to repeal our current ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the recommended action.
Okay. Do I have a second? Well, I'll second it. And Assistant City Clerk Bonus, can you just take the vote so we can?
Absolutely. Councilmember Ding?
Okay, before I vote, okay, I just want to clear, okay, the this ordinary, okay, if we don't do the repeal today, so for the further, we still have a chance to do that, because I, for my understanding, because the the county have six, we have the six months, the 180 days, the county have 12 months. So for the decision, we have any like a time matter, the deadline on there, or we can postpone it?
What if you? Yeah, you don't adopt it today, your, the protections that you passed at the prior meeting will remain in effect, and you have the ability to change those or eliminate them at any point in the future.
If if like this, okay, I think my opinion, just postpone it, repeal it.
Okay, so that's a no?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington?
I'm a no.
Councilmember Pooh?
I.
Vice Mayor Liu?
I'm sorry, no.
Mayor Manchaca?
I.
The motion fails.
Okay, so then, I guess that the next step would be to either provide comment now or provide comments at the next meeting. Keith, how would you think?
I guess one suggestion, based on the comments I heard earlier, and I apologize, my sound has not been great this whole meeting, so I hope I got this right. But I did hear some people suggesting what one course of action would be, well, the one course of action is just to leave it alone as it is. But another course of action that I've heard suggested was that we could amend our ordinance so that it incorporates, so basically parallels the county ordinance in some ways or in all ways. And I think that bridges the the gap between the desire to maintain local control along with having the stronger protections. If that's, if that's something that the city council wants to consider, then we can bring that back at, that should be normal, that should be fairly easy for us to come back with, right? I mean, we have.
We can, we can come back with modifications. But what I was hearing is that it, we, what I was hearing from council is it's not necessarily all of the provisions of the county that we would want to incorporate into an amended city ordinance.
Yeah, I was thinking we could start with all of them, and then, and then, what, I mean, rather than have like a sec, a study session where we kind of hash through it, we could just come back with those revisions kind of in a draft ordinance, and then, you know, make the sausage at the meeting. Because I think that's the universe of things we would be potentially considering, unless there's something in there that we would never want to consider, in which case, there's no point in even putting it in a draft.
Are there any council members that would like to comment at this time? Provide some more guidance to our.
I'll say, I'll say to people who voted against the, against this, what are your objections to the county's ordinance? Tell us now.
I'll speak for myself. I thought I was pretty clear. I don't like some of the, I don't want to go through mine out. I'll go through offline with city attorney, what I do like and what I don't like. I'm, I just think we need to remain the custodians and the gatekeepers of our authority. I don't think we need to cede that to the county, just like I don't like to cede our authority to the state. I like to choose what's good for our city and what's not. We're representing, we're elected to represent our our residents, not the entire county. So I'd rather defer to ourselves.
That if we're just gonna modify our our ordinance to come in line, parallel the the counties, this is a ridiculous exercise then, you know, I mean, if we're just going to match our, just so we have our our own local ordinance.
That's not the only reason. I think we have three council members that don't think it's ridiculous. And that's the way, that's the way we operate.
Well, but but my understanding, Councilmember Harrington.
The table, though. I mean, it doesn't make sense to just basically revise our ordinance to to match the counties. In that case, we should have just repealed it, you know. So I think that if, if other council members, I think one of the issues here is it's very difficult, because it's really, I think, unfair to Councilmember Ding, who is coming onto the council, you know, in the middle of this crisis. So much had happened before he came, came, you know, was, came on to the council. And it's impossible to almost, you know, to bring him up to speed on on everything. So in any case, you know, I'm having, you know, I guess I'm struggling to understand, like, if we're going to, at this point, it seems like our options are to just leave our ordinance as is or to amend it in certain ways. So please tell us how you, if, I guess, what those amendments would be. Or are we just, are we just talking about leaving it as is, that, which is, you know, an option too? Like I said, I think our ordinance is not a bad one, it's just that it's inconsistent with the, with what's going on around us.
Well, my understanding, Councilmember Pooh, I, Councilmember Harrington has, it sounds like a list of different items. I don't think you want to mimic LA County, you want to tailor it for the city. I know Council, Vice Mayor Lau mentioned the six months payback versus the 12-month payback that the county had. And Councilmember Ding wanted, I guess, a little more protections for the landlords. That's what I heard. So I think it's kind of all over the board. I don't know if we can hash it out tonight. I don't know if it would be appropriate for each of the council members to submit their suggested modifications to our city attorney and our city manager, and we kind of work from there. But I think everyone kind of, except for maybe Councilmember Pooh and myself, you know, if there's specifics that we can hash out offline, break if you want to try to get through it today or tonight, it's already nine o'clock. But I I would suggest that we we table this for the next meeting, have the individual council But I, I would suggest that we, we table this for the next meeting, have the individual council members work it through, uh, with our city attorney and city manager, and then we'll have something hopefully more baked than not baked for the next meeting.
Madam Mayor, can I say something to that?
Yeah.
Uh, because of the need to avoid serial meetings, I, I would like to limit receiving comments to just two city council members, until it gets in front of the city council and everyone. So if there's, you know, maybe essentially create a committee to offer suggested changes would be my, my, uh, request, and then we can bring back those changes at whichever city council meeting is appropriate.
Okay, well, that's one suggestion. What, what I, I wasn't including council members, I was just saying, the city attorney and the city manager work through those changes, but we can set up a committee if there are two council members who are willing to volunteer to be part of that committee.
I would actually comment, Keith, that if we are not communicating with each other as council members and only direct with you, that's not a serial meeting. If I just say, here's what I like.
That is true. I, I just have to be really careful because I'm, I'm, the, the issue is that it's putting me in a position where I'll know that three people maybe said this, and I've got to come up with a draft, so aren't I essentially creating a serial meeting that way? I mean, it, it's a little.
Your draft could have two alternate clauses, and we had, we have to vote on one if they were, if they were not.
I could bring, yeah, I could bring everything back as an alternate, as an alternate version. I guess that's, that's.
That's what I'd rather see, my personal, because then the, no one is excluded, none of the council members are excluded, even the ones that voted yes.
Okay, that, that, that's fine. I, I was thinking that I was gonna have to then synthesize the comments into a new draft, which I see as problematic.
No, you would just be collecting the.
Yeah, you could collect every alternate version that's submitted, and then that could come back on the draft.
That's what I would suggest. Are, are there any objections to that?
Okay, uh, because I want to answer the question that, the council member Pooh asked, uh, talked to me, why I make this kind of decision, okay? First of all.
No, 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 I, I, I was not directing any comments directly to you. It was not a negative thing, it's actually a sympathetic thing because it was impossible for you to be able to be prepared for this, um, item. That's what I was saying, Councilmember Ding.
I, you say I'm.
Don't take it to, to be a criticism. It was actually, uh, meant to, to actually support you.
Okay. If you say I'm not prepared, I'm really prepared, okay? Mark can know that, okay, all right? And, okay, so I want to clear, I thank you, when you have mayor, it's you have the urging, the ordinary to help our tenant for the disevacuation. I really appreciate your previous, the, the council member making this, this kind of decision. It's pretty good. Okay, so for me, okay, because the, our resident, not just for the tenant, we also for the small business, for the landlord too, right, we, well, when I got elected, we have to consider all the resident, that they are thought, right? So for, for the ten- tenant right now, at least they have the 180 days, right? Okay, so for my understanding, so we still have a chance to, if we want to repeal or not, right? So after we maybe have more discuss, more like, uh, have a comments, maybe we can hope we do everything, we try to do everything, it's, uh, what's the right for our resident? Okay, yeah, we, we cannot do anything that's too perfect, but we try consider everybody the, the situation. Okay, I really, I, for myself, I, I know that for the tenant right now, it's a, it's a COVID-19, it's a, it's a price, it's a hardship. It's hard to, some people may, they cannot pay the rent, I understand it, okay? But at least we have the 180 days. We can think about it, okay, even we want to, uh, repeal to help them too. Okay, so I hope that the they, they, we can understand it. I saw it, okay? So, uh, that's why I, we try more, because this first, previously you're discussing only, uh, your council, all of your council member, I don't have a chance to involve that. So hopefully after this meeting, maybe you have more time, we can have, uh, both, uh, the comments on that. We can find that the, what's the best way for our resident. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So are we in agreement that we'll just, uh, provide the comments to Keith, our city manager? And for our next meeting, uh, we'll be able to make, uh, a better decision, be in a better place to make a decision on the ordinance. But for now, it stands. Okay, great. No objections. Mark, did you have some?
Let me add one thing, just give me a little flexibility on whether the next meeting ends up being the meeting on Tuesday or the next regular meeting, because if I'm collecting comments and then coming up with a draft.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm at the next regular meeting. Is that reasonable? Yes, okay. Mark, was that your, your concern?
That was my concern.
Yeah, next Tuesday is a special meeting for budgeting. Okay, great. So then, uh, let's move forward. Uh, next item, please.
Public Works Department update. The presentation will be made by Public Works Director and City Engineer Greg Devink.
And Madam Mayor, while Greg gets his presentation ready, I apologize, but we didn't get the presentation materials to the city council soon enough. So we will, uh, commandeer your screen and, uh, show Greg's presentation so everybody can see it. And then as soon as Greg is done with the presentation, we will take it back off the screen, so you'll be able to see everybody's, um, speaker boxes.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Okay, my audio, is my audio fine?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Manchaca, Vice Mayor Liao, members of the council, city attorney, city staff, and our home viewing audience. I'm, uh, Greg Devink, the Public Works Director. And tonight I'm doing a presentation, it's an update for what's been going on with Public Works over this fiscal year, but I've, I've included it to be 18 months. So if you go to slide one B. All right. Uh, these are pictures of how Public Works served popcorn to about 130 children at last year's Public Works Week event at Smith Park, which was a fun and successful event. Sadly, the coronavirus has forced us to cancel our Public Works Week event this year, which would have happened two weeks from right now. On a positive note, this could be considered a cue for our home viewing audience to hit the pause button and go make some popcorn and then come back. I'll apologize in advance for this being a bit long, but given the opportunity to talk about Public Works, I tend to have a lot to say. So we're ready for slide two. Public Works has gone through a very transformative time over an 18-month period. I made this presentation cover 18 months to address the changes that I've seen in my 16 months of working here, plus I want to make this an annual presentation to council and tie it to our fiscal calendar. So the data and numbers are projected through June 30 of this year. The wide word, uh, sorry, the wide diversity of changes within Public Works covers many categories like staffing, operations, and finances. I will cover them all in broad strokes, and please feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. There will also be an opportunity at the end, uh, of my presentation, as well as the chance to back up slides to see them again. In the spirit of a very challenging budget season across the entire country, I'll start off with some positive financial impacts. These will be explained in more detail in future slides and do not encompass all of our frugal efforts. But they do highlight our attitude to be fiscally considerate and responsible in everything we do. The changes that Public Works has already implemented in just an 18-month period have resulted in more than $763,000 in one-time savings and more than $442,000 in ongoing net annual cost savings. Uh, we've also been very busy making many plans that are progressing well, that I expect will result in almost $2 million more net cost savings in the next fiscal year. Something very important to note when discussing revenues and expenditures and associated savings with regards to Public Works is that most of our funding is not general fund. We accomplish most of what we plan, design, and construct and maintain through the sewer fund, gas tax funds, CDBG funds, and funding for many other programs, propositions, and measures. While most of our staffing cost does come from the general fund, we utilize much of the staffing, uh, general fund costs to meet our $1.3 million minimum maintenance of effort obligation to qualify us to receive gas tax each year. Even with these cost-saving improvements that I'll elaborate on shortly, our level of service to residents and the quality of our maintenance efforts have all significantly improved. And go to slide three. The first category I'd like to cover are the changes to our operations and programming. Number one, by encouraging and sometimes just allowing staff to take on new challenges and tasks, we have proven to be skilled and competent to fully replace many of the services that we have historically been done by outside private consulting firms at a higher cost. We have not fully replaced the need for supplemental or highly specialized assistance everywhere. But in broad terms, we're taking on a lot of the CIP design, construction management, inspection, and grant administration work using our in-house staff. Number two, we made a fundamental shift from being a reactive to a much more proactive operation. I did cover this in much more detail in a prior presentation to council where I showed our 10-zone map of the city that we utilized to tackle, tackle specific tasks like street lighting, signals, street signs, stop signs, crosswalks, red curbs, stop bars, et cetera. We address 100% of these elements in one city zone at a time over a three-week period. This makes the tasks manageable and allows us to thoroughly and efficiently get everything done, which has resulted in noticeable reduction in calls for service. Number three, staff knows to consider alternate solutions to all problems we face. I've encouraged staff to not only think of possible alternate solutions and better ways to solve a problem or save some money, but also feel free to bring their ideas to my attention. I'm a big believer that the best ideas almost always come from the people that are most connected to the actual work being done. This very open and less regimented work environment fosters ideas and communications that have resulted in many positive changes to how we address the needs of the public and our infrastructure in the most efficient and sustainable way. Number four, I think this is the most fun. We are designing and constructing small and moderate-sized projects entirely using in-house staff talent. We lower some images of one-time projects and some routine works that Public Works does. On the left, the leftmost image, you'll see a deep trench that we cut in the street where a ponding problem, after every rainstorm, this corner would flood and stay a big puddle for a week or two after a rainstorm. The street does not grade properly to drain, uh, away from this area. So what we did was we dug out a large trench about four feet deep, maybe five, six feet wide, put in filter fabric, filled it with gravel, and then paved the whole top with permeable concrete. Now, when it rains, um, it still, uh, water migrates to this area. But when the rain stops, the puddle quickly dissipates into the ground. So we've solved this problem using in-house staff, um, at a not-too-expensive a cost. I think it was around $1,000 for the concrete. And, um, we're also, this is something that gets kudos towards our MS4 permit. The state wants us to infiltrate stormwater in the ground rather than let it run out of our city in any other way. The second photo is just routine, uh, freshening up of our stops, bars, red curbs, crosswalks. Um, this is what we did in our 10 zones, um, thoroughly completing everything one zone at a time. The third photo is of a concrete countertop that, uh, staff recently cast as part of the remodel that staff did entirely at the Smith Park, concession stand. And the last picture is repairing some broken streetlight conduit. It's usually damaged by trees or some other work, but, um, our aging conduits are rotting and they tend to break over time, and so we're making these repairs in-house ourselves. I don't think this is not something new, but it's something we routinely do that generally goes unnoticed. Go to slide four, please. So over my first 18 months of working here, two-thirds of the 35 staff positions in Public Works have been hired with new staff, promoted to new titles and responsibilities, or transitioned to a whole new function. This even includes me. Last year, city council approved three new positions for Public Works that did not cost the general fund anything. The first one was a maintenance worker one, which we hired with a sewer fund, and the scope of what they've been doing has greatly increased, and I'll go over that soon. The second one was a Public Works Inspector to be funded by the CIP non-general funds. And this, uh, has started, it's been going well up until this virus impact. And what it's allowed us to do is to not hire outside inspection help. And also, that's tied typically to not hiring outside construction management help. The third position agreed to was also funded by non-general fund CIP expenditures or revenues. But I have not hired this position yet because I don't feel really a surge of CIP projects going into construction has happened yet. I don't want to hire anybody until really the work is justified. So that's the status of what was approved last year. Considering our general fund balance and the massive negative impacts of coronavirus to our future revenues, this year I'm requesting four new positions that will also not add to any general fund expenses. The first two are going to be maintenance workers, well, four are maintenance workers. First two will be funded by gas tax, and they will be exclusively used to work within the right-of-way, pretty much for improvements to our street infrastructure and sidewalks. And curb and gutter. The second one will be funded by Measure W. Now, the guidelines for Measure W have not been established yet, but we do have a stormwater consultant who does feel, um, staff labor will be a reimbursable expense by Measure W, but we would not proceed to hire anybody until that's been solidified. And the last one is another maintenance worker one, where historically we've had three vacant part-time positions in our parks department and one in facilities, two in parks. And they have generally provided a lot of, uh, very helpful, uh, labor in our maintenance effort. But I'm converting, I'm proposing to convert the three of those to one full-time position because I think, um, it's more valuable to our operations and to the city to have one solid permanent employee with a dedication to a career rather than part-time employees that, uh, just have a job. And so that's, um, over my 16 months, I've been work, moving people out of those spots and keeping them vacant for this opportunity in the next year's budget. I think that's, uh, this summer, I hope to dra- dramatically change how we address the single largest infrastructure problem facing the city and also the biggest source of complaints among the residents and businesses. And yes, you all know what that is, it's the condition of our streets. Many months ago, I made a thorough presentation to council about our pavement condition index, the poor condition of so many of our streets, the history of how we got here, and what our street con- condition consultant stated they would need to elevate them to a good rating. If you recall, our consultant's report stated that we needed to fund our annual street improvement budget at over $5 million a year for the next 10 years to get our streets generally to a good condition. Historically, we've funded 1 million a year and for, for most of the past decade, and recently it's increased to 2 million a year. There was a bump from the Ace Trench project funded, funding because they, uh, repaved some of the hall routes associated with that project. And another bump because we borrowed money with, uh, an I-Bank loan to accelerate some paving projects. But now those loan payments are due, and this reduces our available funds for paving moving forward. Our budget reality compounded by the terrible economy today assures that 5 million per year cannot be committed towards our street maintenance program. Understanding that our general fund situation, our general fund situation, 100% of our street paving budget comes from gas tax and several other grants and measures. It's approximately 2 million per year and will likely be slightly reduced due to the current poor economy. Historically, we used most of our very limited funds to address our worst streets. This commitment to repairing our worst street costs the city approximately 15 to 30 times the amount, depending on the process of that for extending the life of our good or moderate-conditioned streets. While we were able to address a few streets in terrible condition each year, we allowed our moderate streets to decline into a much worse and more expensive, poor condition. And that requires full removal and replacement as the only possible corrective work. This summer, we're going on a new project, or we're working on a new project to address the moderate streets and in a more cost-effective way. This is the only way we will ever get overall control and make progress towards the impact of our pavement condition index without adding an additional $3 million a year of general funds. Our next project will be entirely designed in-house and will apply thin rubberized chip. Our next project will be entirely designed in-house and will apply a thin rubberized chip seal layer followed by a fiber-reinforced slurry coat. This will make many cracked, cracking moderate streets look new and possibly extend their life an additional 15 years before they degrade to poor condition. The fastest way streets degrade is when cracks develop that allow water to penetrate to the base material below. Wet base material allows for more movement, which results in more failure of the pavement above. We are planning to rent a crack-ceiling trailer this summer and put two maintenance worker ones on it ahead of the resurfacing contractor. This will greatly improve the overall project quality, adding one more element of protection that we can do ourselves for less money than contracting it out, and I believe we can do it ourselves and produce higher-quality results. Staff knows that we are the owners of our work, and along with the public, we are also the benefactors of good-quality workmanship. I'm also considering using staff to edge-grind our streets along the gutters prior to this overlay as well. Staff is, this is still being evaluated because we do not own an edge-grinder. In using our in-house staff to complete work towards improvements in street quality, we can stretch our limited dollars to ultimately get higher quality and even more lane miles paved. Some of our grant funds have been, have restricted uses, and council has also made it clear in the past that we need to pursue improvements to both the cost-effective moderate-street preservation as well as the very expensive, poor-street replacement, which remains our plan. In the coming slides, you will see more plans for utilizing Public Works staff to get the most benefit and value for the city. Please go to slide, I wrote slide five, oh, slide six, I guess. Another significant evolution in Public Works proposed in the new budget is taking our four existing sewer-funded positions plus one more Measure W-funded position and breaking them out of the field operations group into their own division. Staff, Public Works, Human Resources, and the City Manager have evaluated this and all agree it's warranted because the scope of this group's work effort has grown dramatically over the past 18 months, and our maintenance effort is vastly improved as well. Some of the things this group has taken on, and a lot of it we historically have not, is the fog, which is fat soils and grease inspections, which is at every restaurant, over 200 restaurants now get inspected by city staff. Rather than contract that out to private inspection firms, we've found with absolute certainty, we do a far better job because we go back and follow up on violations and have found many restaurants did not even have their required grease traps, even though we've outsourced inspection for a long time. They're taking on industrial stormwater inspections, which is kind of good housekeeping practices at all our industrial sites for what happens with stormwater runoff. They've taken on hazardous material management and disposal, which is a fairly complex process. We will be taking on video inspection of both our sewers and stormwater systems. This is required every five years, and last year council approved, or this fiscal year council approved the purchase of a camera truck, which unfortunately has been delayed as part of the coronavirus shutting down fabrication of the truck. We have always done annual cleaning. I imagine that was also a bit more reactive than proactive. Now, we have, we're utilizing geographic information software to hit up every spot. We've updated our maps, and we do hotspots who are cleaning every quarter. So every three months, we hit the more problematic areas that have a history of backups. And with the coronavirus, interestingly enough, the mass rate on toilet paper has many people without toilet paper, which is correcting itself now. But people are flushing non-toilet paper items more frequently, causing more backups in sewer systems citywide or countrywide. So we are now doing the hotspots monthly until this virus levels out. The lift station is fairly new, it was constructed with the Ace Trench, and it's a very problematic design and requires a lot of maintenance and regular inspections. It's actually checked every day and serviced every three weeks where we open up the pump inlets and clean out the impellers. It's not a great design, but staff has discovered many problems, even not last weekend, but two weekends ago. They were called out to replace an overheating pump, only one of two. So we already know failure of this lift station is catastrophic, it does back up and flood other buildings and staff, I know with certainty, has averted several more backups just by their very proactive maintenance efforts and discovering problems with the system. We will also be taking on the cleaning program and responsibilities for the MS4 permit, which is municipal separate sanitary sewer system. That's another obligation we have to do annually. We do, we've, we've rebid that, taken it from the county, and we will be going out privately. That's something that the outside industry can do much cheaper than we can. So that will still be outsourced, but this group will manage that work and ensure compliance and be responsive to any damage that they find in the hundreds of trash excluders that have been installed. And this group also does environmental compliance reporting, another element of wastewater and stormwater. Let's see, this is just a short list over a short time, but I'm hoping to grow this effort. So let me see, where am I? Okay, next slide. Engineering. The engineering group manages our CIP budget, performs plan checks, reviews subdivision maps, issues permits in the public right-of-way, and inspects both public and private work in the public right-of-way. Most significant changes for this group are listed as follows. Number one, staff is preparing plans, specifications, and our bid packages for our annual street paving CIP, our community development block grant pedestrian ramp project, which already started construction. The city hall elevator contract was awarded, however, production of some of their needed parts has been halted by the virus. We are urging them to get that going as fast as possible. We would love to do this while city hall is closed or will have limited access to the public. And engineering staff has put together the bid package and put it out to bid the Lugo Park equipment installation, which was just awarded tonight. Engineering staff is also performing construction management, inspection, and grant compliance documentation tasks instead of hiring outside consultants. And staff is changing our approach to our largest infrastructure problem, poor condition of our streets, and the limited funds to improve them, which I've already discussed. So, next slide. Field Operations is the group that generally maintains our constructed infrastructure in the public right-of-way. This is the group that developed the use of the 10-zone map, creating manageable work zones and more efficient maintenance efforts and tracking, which reduced associated complaints. They have also adopted geographic info, geographical information software, also known as GIS, for asset documentation, work planning, maintenance tracking. What I think is also a very exciting change for this group is that we are taking on small-to-medium-sized projects that would traditionally have been done by contractors or simply not done at all. So recent projects include, we have procured and installed the speed radar sign on Country Club. If you recall, that's the final result of the Speed Hunt policy. So that's been installed, residents adjacent to the sign immediately complained, but we ordered a solar-powered sign, so it can be portable. And we will be relocating the sign again shortly to a new location to hopefully adjust driver behavior at another location where speeding is an issue. Staff designed, engineering designed the new crosswalk, and council approved it, and Public Works, the Field Operations Group, installed the new crosswalk at Smith Park, including the ramp, paint, flashing signs, push buttons, and reflectors. Field Operations also constructed a new wall with the help from park staff at the police station. That wall was actually solid grouted just today with three full concrete trucks of grout. It's a very large 320-foot-long, seven-foot-tall block wall to replace this more flimsy rented chain-link fence. Staff also installed permeable street pavers at the flooding corner, which I already mentioned, and we have converted, we're in the process of converting streetlight fixtures to LED. The street in front of the hospital and the block south of that, as well as a lot of lights at Smith Park, have already been converted to LED. This effort pays for itself fairly quickly in a year or two, just from energy savings. Next slide. Fleet, like pretty much all Public Works groups, goes unnoticed so long as they do their work well. Fleet is responsible for the maintenance and upgrades of our entire fleet of vehicles, including fire trucks, police vehicles, heavy equipment, eight emergency generators, and of course, regular cars and trucks. They also purchase our fuel, certify our compliance with AQMD requirements, track our mileage, and send retired items to auction. Here are some of the changes and work items that Fleet is accomplishing. They are applying for AQMD for limited-use exemptions that allow us for continued use for expensive but lightly-used vehicles such as our large dump truck. We repurpose fleet vehicles where possible, and an example of that is taking old police cruisers that have maybe high miles and a lot of wear, and we tune them up and put them back in shape for use as our Public Works Inspector vehicles. We evaluate older vehicles for major in-house improvements or send them to auction. We are looking into converting some of our CNG vehicles with expired tanks because the tanks are incredibly expensive to replace. We could change them to regular fuel, extending their life possibly for lesser costs, we're evaluating that now. And then we get the advantages of regular fuel, which has a lot more range than a CNG tank and convenience because our CNG is purchased from Alhambra. We can perform major in-house repairs where possible. We've recently replaced a generator in a recent, in our Toyota Hybrid. We outfit all the equipment in the new police vehicles, and we've done a few engine and transmission replacements where that was warranted. Next slide. Parks and facilities, they maintain a lot more than their simple title describes. Parks includes over 8,000 street and park trees, play equipment, picnic areas, the Smith Park pool, the sports courts and sports fields, street medians, freeway ramp landscaping, and the metro park-and-ride lots, in addition to all the grounds maintenance that are well-kept, parks and facilities. This group also recently added landscape maintenance responsibilities for the land adjacent to the entire Ace Trench length through the city. They also maintain all of our city-owned buildings and associated infrastructure improvements. Like every group in Public Works, their scope has not only increased, but it was all well-received. Here are only a few of our recent accomplishments beyond their normal maintenance responsibilities. Staff painted the senior center, the grape arbor, and the perimeter wall at that facility. They constructed the tenant improvements at the San Gabriel Police Department Satellite Station. They resurfaced the handball courts just last week and are resurfacing the basketball courts next week while the virus has those facilities close to the public. They performed the pump pool and vacuum replacement in-house. We remodeled the Smith Park concession stand, and we've built an enclosed room to encapsulate the server area inside Magrati. Thinking frugally and responsibly, we've renegotiated the Public Works cleaning contract, saving $5,000 a year. That's for the facility that I'm in right now. And we have taken on cleaning and sanitizing of the public restrooms during the COVID-19 epidemic. This includes sanitizing the public restrooms that remain open to the public and cleaning them multiple times a day. We sanitize them twice a day. This is an extra effort because while the courts are closed down, we are not getting community service workers anymore. So we don't have that source of labor anymore, we have to do that more in-house and take on more work, but it's going well. Next slide. I'm now going to summarize some of the more significant and interesting financial savings of the 18 months I'm talking about. We've saved $390,000 just in the sewer master plan item. We put out to an RFP right when I got here and got one bid back for $498,000, which I thought was very high for a port that's around an inch thick. It does involve a lot of work, but I felt we could take that on ourself, and successfully, we are more than halfway done with it. We're doing this with purchasing some sewer modeling software, both for capacity and condition. We've done the video inspections already, and we are also bringing on a consultant to verify our capacity assessment at a much lower cost, doing a simple study for 90 days. And it was all put together, for the most part, by one college part-time intern. So it has a net savings of $390,000, and I think it's going to be a good result in the end. We did cancel that dump truck that was proposed to be purchased when I got here. We immediately canceled that, and it's, I think, a great discovery because the dump truck is not in bad condition, it's very operable. However, it's aged out of AQMD emission requirements, that's why a lot of fleet gets retired from places. We are applying for a limited use so that we can keep this good vehicle on service and not spend $200,000. We just, well, we're almost done with the block wall at the police station, that was a very long wall. And versus contracting it out, it required removal of the old footings that were there, constructing new footings, setting all the rebar forming, pouring the footings, stacking all the block wall with rebar, solid grouting it, and then finishing it to look good. We canceled the fleet service truck, which we ordered before I got here, and a year later, we still did not have possession of it. And that's when we realized our budget difficulties, and I asked it to be canceled. We'll tolerate the less-appropriate Crown Victoria that we've been using and hopefully get a more usable truck in the future. We've analyzed our Cal recycling grants that were not fully billed out over the years, and for over many years, we've discovered that the admin costs were reimbursable costs, so that resulted in $78,000 not being paid back. This is an interesting one, we had a sinkhole a few months ago, and we did a repair, and in evaluating that repair, it's over a rotten line that's going to have to eventually be dealt with. But the prior year or two years ago, we contracted out the exact same repair for $52,000, and our crews went out there, dug it up, patched it, and put it all back for $1,000 in material. That's what I mean by doing a lot more in-house, where traditionally we're just used to contracting everything out. The painting of the senior center, grape arbor and perimeter wall, has a net savings of $27,000. The construction of the tenant improvements at the satellite station, $15,000, refinishing the handball courts and basketball courts ourselves, is saving $15,000. The GIS intern created a model for us that we had a separate bid for, for several thousand dollars. And I included in here a net one-time cost to subtract the cost of the camera truck for $192,000. That's how I came up with the $763,000 savings, and this is not a complete list of everything we've done, but it's the more significant and interesting items. The $192,000 camera truck will result in future ongoing savings, so the savings for that truck is not in this slide, it's in the next slide, which we can go to now. And the net financial impacts on an ongoing basis, these are my favorite because you do work once and you just save money year after year after year. The first item, historically, we never charged Edison for their permits in the right-of-way, and they had an argument that their franchise agreement with the city allowed them to do everything for free, which I read and said, no, it's not there. So we implemented a fee, and that's netting us about $20,000 a year for all the work Edison does within the city. They were completely agreeable to it because that's what they do for other cities. Our GIS intern reprogrammed the GIS software that we've already had, all cities use this software, and we just weren't utilizing it much at all. And he found a module in there that could replace our CityWorks software that we were using to track work orders. And we had an annual license with the company for $45,000 a year. He tweaked the software that cost us under $10,000 a year that we already had, and we're going to have anyway to fully replace the functionality of CityWorks, and we canceled that contract, and we've had no decline in our use. We are performing in-house fog inspections where we used to pay $62,000 a year. I think we're doing a far superior performance and getting far more compliance. Again, we're the owner, and we appreciate the value of doing a good job because when it's done right, we get less grease in the sewer system and less work and spills for our own problems to deal with. Our catchbase and cleaning program, we had already executed a contract with the county for a lot more money, a ballpark of $160,000, $180,000 that they initially lost, and when they refound it, we discovered we could do it much cheaper by contracting it out, and that's going to save us $102,000 a year for the same frequency cleaning, the same compliance with the RMS4 permit. We're doing in-house repairs to much of our Ace Trench, so the Ace Trench gets inspected monthly, and we get repair estimates from the contractor or the inspection company. And a lot of that work that is above the trench where there's vandalism in the fence or weeds or something broken that we can reach without going all the way into the trench. We've been doing those repairs ourself and saves us about $20,000 off the cost of what they were going to charge us. We've been doing those repairs ourself and saves us about twenty thousand off the cost of what they were going to charge us. We've initiated fees for encroachment permits. Actually, we haven't initiated. We made it more appropriate. Historically, you could pay a flat fee of, I don't remember, a couple hundred dollars. And you could take an entire street for a year if you felt like it. That's very inappropriate. So now the fee is reflects how large an area they want. And how long the duration they want, and this will result in another ten thousand dollars in fees. For private construction that wants to use our right of way, which has a value. We are taking on in-house CIP designs, plans, specifications and grants administration. That's mostly engineering. That will save two hundred thousand a year versus. Hiring outside consultants. And we are also taking on in-house IP construction management and inspection. Saving us another hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. And that has the negative two hundred seventeen at the bottom. Because we added a public works inspector to not hire outside work as well as added another maintenance worker. To take on some of the additional sewer functions. So that's subtracted out, making this a net annual change. We did change our cleaning contract in the public works facility from five nights to two nights. And we changed our, while we're looking to do our sewer user fee in-house, we're possibly put out to bid. And we'll pay a much lower fee than historically we've been paying fifty thousand dollars to update our annual reporting. So that's a net four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars every year. There's an ongoing effort for design and construction management, but a lot of this is a forever no more work needed savings. So those are awesome. The next slide, please. In the future, here's some things that we've been working on and hope to accomplish mostly next year. We're going to do in-house design and construction of a police station addition using. Development impact fees. It is in next proposed in next year's budget. I believe we can build roughly, I just have a sketch for a plan, but we can build roughly. An aid office addition to the police station with. Using less than the three hundred thousand dollars that are currently in their impact fee balance, fund balance. And doing that out outsourced would probably be over a million dollars for commercial construction bid to a city of that size. We are going to be converting a lot of our circuits to LED. I've separated out the multiple circuits. For a five hundred thousand dollar one-time savings versus a contractor who's already given us their pricing to convert it for us. So there's companies that approach the city and say, hey, we'll give you a great big loan. And you can pay that loan down with energy savings. You can see the energy savings on the multiple circuits is twenty-eight thousand a year. That would be converted to a loan payment of over five hundred thousand dollars to get the work done. We can do this work ourself in-house, save the five hundred thousand dollars and save the twenty-eight thousand dollars a year back to our general fund budget. Or unless it's funded by gas tax, I don't recall, but it is a savings either way. If we save money for gas tax, that money will eventually be used to pave streets. The series circuits is much more difficult. It's a smaller system luckily, but it involves a lot more work and converting that in-house will cost two hundred thousand. And have a savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We are doing in-house pavement crack ceiling ahead of the CIP resurfacing project that would save thirty thousand dollars just for this one year. We're doing in-house contract administration for two of the seven, seven, ten projects that were awarded. That's the citywide signal upgrade or modernization. And the fiber connectivity linking our signals together and tying them all back to the public works facility with a new traffic control center. We plan to manage the design contract in-house and as well as the construction and inspection in-house. That will save us three hundred seventy thousand dollars for giving that work away. And it's metro funded, so we will get more. Work out of it. We might get more. Signal equipment or more distance done in fiber connectivity because we're saving the money. We're doing in-house remodel of the fire station main restroom. Hopefully that'll save about thirty-five thousand dollars. And we are doing the video inspection of our sewer system where we have to do the entire sewer system every year. Where I subtracted over a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars to buy that truck. That truck enables us to save sixty thousand a year. For as long as we have that truck and use that truck, but the truck also provides another benefit. Where we can go and inspect problems and backups and we have the as an available facility. For ongoing operations. So these list, this list here saves about one point seven million in one time savings and a hundred twenty-three thousand in ongoing savings. Most of which I think we can accomplish in just the next fiscal year pending, you know, council approval of the budget requests. Next slide. So the future of public works in the administration and we do have an administration group that is so small, they didn't get their own slide, but. It's essentially myself, a management analyst and our executive assistant and a part-time. Counterperson. We want to expand the use of our grants and environmental compliance roles, engineering, as I already said, will manage more designing, construction. The traffic signal upgrades and the fiber connectivity projects by Metro and possibly future sewer lining projects and sewer replacement projects, field operations. Will take on new tasks such as crack ceiling ahead of the paving projects and more one-time projects like constructing the police station addition. Fleet enhance our maintenance tracking and preventative maintenance program, parks and facilities rebuild our. Or rebuild our annual tree maintenance contract. And take on more scope, reducing the need for contract work. And our new sewer and stormwater group. This group will ensure our constant consent judgment compliance. And take on several tasks previously contracted to consultants. Next slide. And we're at the finish line and I'll quickly look at the pictures at the bottom left. That is staff changing out the pool pump at Smith Park Pool. The top left is pretty explanation, like self-explanatory. Just replacing some sidewalk. The next slide is Sue's or sewer crews. Jetting clean our sewer lines. The next slide is staff promoting oil recycling at one of our city events. The next slide is our brand new resurfacing of the floors of the handball court. And the next slide to the top right is staff installing an electrical outlet to add air conditioning to the server room at City Hall. And the bottom right slide is probably the most cool slide to me. It's. That essentially is replacing, I believe, fourteen. Old fashioned inefficient light fixtures with just four new LED fixtures for the handball courts. Which actually result in much brighter lighting and those four fixtures cost eight hundred dollars. And the change saves about four hundred a year. So in two years, those fixtures have paid for themselves. Providing much better quality lighting to the users of the court. And after that, the rest is just savings for the city. So we are at the finish line and. I can take questions or comments.
Thank you, Greg. So let's take yeah council questions or comments first and then I'll. I'll turn to the city clerk or any public comments on the side. So let's begin with Vice Mayor Lau. Do you have any questions? Vice Mayor Lau. You're on mute. No questions?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Actually, he was very impressive. You're doing such a great job for such a short period of time. The only thing I have concern is, you know, you want to hire more people using gas tax because nobody's driving it now. So the gas tax actually declined a lot. So I don't know, you know, for next year. Or do you know what's the current gas tax we're receiving?
Currently, our gas tax, I believe, is just over a million, between a million and one point one million. I do think the hit to next year's gas tax will be a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we'll probably make between seven and eight hundred thousand is my guess. Someone in finance might know better, but that's my estimate.
Well, from, yeah, well, I, I think this is from the League of California City. They don't think. That we're going to get that much, but. You know, we'll, we'll see what's going to happen. But anyway, congratulations. You did such a great job. But even we, you know, you didn't mention Major M. So what we, what are we going to do as Major?
I apologize. I am not prepared to answer that question right now.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I think, you know, if we want to keep. Certain amount of money to fix our streets, we can utilize Major M. And all we have to do is just use that revenue leaseback bond. And we can, you know, bounce for a million dollars. If we still have that six hundred thousand annual revenue. And we can use that to fix our streets in three to five years. So that will take care of most of the best streets in the city. So that's my kind of, thank you. Great job again.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, point of information, our gas tax, one point one million on average.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Ken, for that additional point of clarification. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just wanted to say, you know, great job, Greg. I think that especially. Bringing more things in-house. Makes so much sense, I think. I seem to recall we've had conversations about this in the past and. And all the savings that you can show from that. And I think also, you know, higher quality work because you can't expect. Contractors and consultants to have the same level of investment as, you know, our own staff and folks who are here day in, day out. You know, serving the community. So just, I don't have any questions or comments, just to, you know, just want to commend you and, and the entire public works crew for. I think, and I think you can really feel and notice the difference as you're driving around the community as well. So, so, yeah, just keep up the good work and, you know. We certainly need all those savings in these times when, you know, revenues are negatively impacted and so forth. Just really hope we can continue the progress we've been making in terms of our physical infrastructure. Even though we're, we have these challenging times. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. I'd like to just address that in that. In my observation that you brought to my mind is that when we do things in-house, we're not motivated by profit. It's a very big difference between us and contractors. You know, our staff really gets, gets paid the same whether they do a good job or a bad job or a cheap job. And, you know, I, I believe it, I always kind of convey that I'm really proud of the quality and staff we have. And they do, they do take pride in their work. Every one of them wants to do a good job and everyone realizes. That if they do a good job today, their job is easier tomorrow. So I think that motivation just does inherently result in better quality work.
Absolutely. Thanks again.
Hey, Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Greg for the presentation and I don't really have any questions. It was well done. I just wish we were able to do this live and have an actual audience because sometimes you get better feedback that way, but. I really do appreciate it's very thorough and it shows what good work we're doing. So thank you.
Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, okay. I thank you that Greg has did a good job and I saw you save a lot of the. The city, the fun on that. Yeah, I appreciate our, the party worker do the work and your leadership. Yeah, and the one question is, would you say that we have changed the software to the city walks? This software, it's mostly, it's like, can like click the data, it's all the our street, which one is the worst, which one is it? Just need a paving. Is there all the data at the inside?
That there's a more complicated answer to that. We actually, no, we, I'll explain. For the street condition index, it's a report we do every couple of years. We do contract that out to a firm. They don't use. Any of our software for that. They use their own in-house software. And they create our map. We do have tables of the condition of every street and repair estimates and, and. Forecasted investment and what that would do to our overall index. And then the city work software that was being utilized to essentially. Track our sewer maintenance effort. Part of our consent judgment. Had us, I guess, in a, in a bit of a frenzy to get on board and get in compliance as fast as we can. With the state lawsuit against us and we purchased that software. To essentially track our maintenance effort in our sewer system. Because Public Works does more than the sewer, other groups adopted it and we were using it to track our maintenance effort on sidewalks and. Other elements of what we do. So there was a big data set in that software because we used it for several years. And that data does become relevant, especially in future claims. You get sued for something a year later than something actually happened. You can go back and track what was your maintenance effort. That's, it is valuable to have that information. In migrating it over to a module that's already contained within our GIS software, the other cheaper program. We did take all that data out and migrate it over. So we didn't lose any of our history in abandoning that forty-five thousand dollar a year software program. We really lost nothing and the new program staff really likes it. It's working better on their phones out in the field. So it's, it was a very good move. For not too big an effort by one part-time college intern. It's, it's, I'm very excited about that one.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that, does that conclude your questions?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Yeah.
Okay, and I was just going to say, my comments are, first of all, you can just sense the pride you have, Greg. In, in all the efforts that your team has accomplished, you know, you've been able to hire. You've been able to protect our general fund. Less reliance, as has been said, on consultants, more in-house work. You're making inroads with the police station, so giving us hope that we can make some progress with our police station. So I really appreciate that. You have one time and ongoing savings and lastly, just the energy savings in general. I mean, that's also another project that. We've been hoping could make some, some progress. So just thank you for, for everything you've done. And again, in such a short period of time, I have promised you that your presentations would never be at the end and I failed. But next time, I'll try to put. Earlier in the, in the agenda, because you've always been put at the end, but, but thank you so much. This is a very high note, I think. And, you know, I don't know what else to say, but, but just keep up the good work.
I will, I'll let you off the hook on being last tonight because I actually requested of Mark to go last. I did know. Well, I knew this would be a long presentation. I had no idea the presentation before this one would be even longer. But my intent was to go last just because it was long. So you got to pass this time.
Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, well, let's see. I'll make the announcement that the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Assistant clerk, please read any comments received.
Mayor, we have not received any comments at this time.
Okay, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda. Comments will be read for up to three minutes. Assistant city clerk bonus, please read any comments that have been received.
No comments have been received at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make this extremely brief, just a reminder to the city council and the community. That we will have our first real budget meeting a week from tonight. On Tuesday, the 12th, starting at five thirty PM. We'll be doing a very high level overview of our revenues and expenditures for next year. Focusing mostly on the general fund and then also have some discussion points for the council to go over so that. And then also have some discussion points for the council to go over so that we can craft our budget. And then, uh, towards the end of May, we'll start having our budget meetings in earnest. And we'll have at least, uh, meetings, chances for council and the public to, um, learn about the budget and to provide input and. Obviously, direction and craft the way the budget looks, so it's an important one next week and, uh, please put it in your calendars.
Thank you. Council comments and conference reports, I'll start with Vice Mayor Lau.
Oh, uh, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, last Friday, we had three, uh, nonprofits, uh, from San Gabriel. And they, uh, host this event, they pass out fifteen thousand masks. And twenty two thousand gloves, so we attract thirty five hundred people, show up at the, uh, San Gabriel Mission Playhouse parking lot. So, I, I guess, you know, it was a big surprise for me because I didn't think, uh, that people still need those P P E. But I would advise people, uh, wear masks, I wear gloves, uh, if it's possible. Because this coronavirus is going to stay with us, especially people that have, uh, no symptoms, you know. Cinematic people and also people who recover, uh, from this disease. They still have it in their body, you know, it's just like hepatitis, but it's just when, uh. When the immune system is low, they might transmit to other people. So we just have to wear masks all the time, so this has become, uh, necessary now, but. Uh, we are still receiving P P E donations, but, uh. But I'll work with other groups besides the, uh, this, uh, San Gabriel Alliance Club, so, uh. This is my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding.
Yes, uh, special for the pandemic crisis, so we try help each other, thank the, our. Fire Department and, uh, Police Department that keep our city safety. And, uh, also have, uh, still have some organization that generous the donation. Uh, they, uh, this afternoon, I have some, uh, they call it, uh, the California Taiwanese organization. They send, uh, the mask to the, our local nursing home to help the, the frontline work to protect them. Yeah, okay, so my comments are still, like, uh, our San Gabriel, the resident, stay home, stay healthy. Uh, stay safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Harrington.
Uh, tonight, Mayor, nothing regarding any events or anything or meetings, because I don't think any of us have attended any. But I would like to just thank staff, um, we've had some good reports, um. Like, uh, like to thank especially, um, both chiefs and, um. Rebecca and, and everyone that put, put this stuff together, I think it's very, um. Good for the residents to hear what's going on and keep abreast of what's, uh, happening in San Gabriel, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pooh.
Uh, thank you, Madame Mayor, um. I likewise just want to, uh, thank all the individuals and organizations who have donated P P E to. To the city, to city hall, the fire department, the police department. Um, and also to the hospital, the San Gabriel Valley Medical Center. Uh, and also just thank all the staff too for, again, keeping things together, keeping things moving forward. You know, the report we just got from, from Greg and Public Works shows us that, uh, the, uh, the work of the city doesn't stop. Even this, during this COVID nineteen crisis and, um. We're going to be tackling the budget next Tuesday, so, uh. So, you know, we need to start thinking about, you know. We're always constantly thinking about what's next, you know, o- obviously, and, um. Yeah, I appreciate everybody's efforts and, uh, and willingness to work together during this period of time.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, um, for myself, I just wanted to remind everyone again, uh, the testing sites, the closest ones available to our residents are the one in El Monte. San Gabriel Valley Airport and, um, East Los Angeles College. If you, uh, believe, uh, you have some symptoms or you are a central worker. You don't need health insurance, the, the testing is free, so, so please go. Uh, community acts and kindness as, um, a council member, well, actually, all the councilmembers have kind of mentioned, there's. Just so much that is being done, uh, the P P E, the hand sanitizers, just lunches alone. Um, we have such a supportive community and, um, I really applaud, uh, Jonathan Foo to try to. Capture all those, um, acts and, and trying to share with the community, because I, you just hear so much negative. And if you go onto that page or, or if you just see some of the stories that are being shared. It's inspiring, it, it's uplifting, and so we have to remember, um, to, to include in the mix. Some positivity, we all need it right now. And staff, uh, I too want to just commend all the work that is taking place. You're a little bit invisible right now because the public facilities are closed, but the work is being done day after day. It doesn't even look like it, it's not even a Monday through Friday anymore, I, I believe you're working seven days a week, I know, I, I'm getting emails. I'm getting questions on the weekend, so the days are starting to mesh a little bit. But I, I just want to praise and applaud the work that is being done by all of you. And I hope you get some thank yous, I know, um, I've gotten some thank yous, um. Uh, on behalf of the, of the, of the staff, you know, just the work that you're doing, the, the appreciation they have and, and the quick responses and so. That is not going unnoticed, so, so thank you so much and, uh, thank you to Mark for. Being our fearless leader out there and, uh, you know, greatly appreciated. So we have no closed session, um, tonight. At this time, we had one earlier, but not to, not at this point. Uh, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May nineteenth at six thirty, but we do have a budget meeting next week. Um, and so with that meeting adjourned, good night and thank you, everybody.